Here.
Here.
All right, here. Report regarding posting of agenda. All right, thank you. Would everyone stand and please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in visible delivery and justice for all.
All right, we've got two sets of minutes to approve. The first is September 9th, oh, sorry, September 29th of 2010. Comments, corrections? Hearing on, could we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second it.
Motion support. Call roll of approval of the minutes, please.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Uh, you weren't, you need to abstain. You weren't there.
Okay, I'm gonna change that to abstain. I'm gonna abstain.
Aye. On a vote of three to zero with two abstentions, the minutes of Wednesday, September 29th, 2010, were approved. Let's move on to the minutes of October 6th, 2010. Comments or corrections on those?
If we accept the minutes of October 6th?
Second.
Motion in support. Call roll, please.
Aye.
Abstain. Abstain.
Aye. A rough start here.
Aye.
Aye. On a vote of four to zero with one abstention, the minutes of October 6th, 2010, were approved. Agenda item five, oral communications, I have none. On agenda item six, it's a zoning appeal. This is an appeal from the decision of a planning hearing officer. It's heard as a de novo hearing. Testimony given at the planning hearing officer's hearing should be repeated because the commission does not review the tapes of those meetings. Decisions rendered today will be based on the evidence presented at this hearing and the evidence in the file, including appeal documents, staff reports, and letters received. Individuals speaking today should therefore present all evidence which they may wish this commission to consider. A handout describing the appeals process is available at the front counter. The appeal items are considered as public hearings. The commission will consider testimony from the appellant, applicant, staff, and any member of the public wishing to speak. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of these pink cards and present it to the recording secretary. Any cards I have in hand now, other than the applicant themselves, who will be given 15 minutes, will be entitled to three minutes. If I get any cards, once we get past the staff report, late arrivals will be given one minute to speak. So if you want to speak, now's the time to fill in a card. Okay, um, so introducing the matter. It's a revocation of zoning use certificate, PZUC 2008-0251. The named business is International Life Cuisine. It's at 420 West Colorado Street, which is 5696-003-053. The appellant/business is Art Carpeptigan. And it is an appeal of a revocation of a zoning use for the International Cuisine Restaurant. I am suspecting that staff will actually continue, because I know how much you love to read those out loud. And the recommendation is a motion to sustain the director of community planning's decision and approve the revocation of the zoning use certificate. Could we have staff overview, please?
Yes. Chairman Kane, planning commissioners. This is a revocation of a zoning use certificate. So this is, unlike other revocations that you've heard earlier, this is not a decision made by the planning hearing officer in regards to a conditional use permit, or variance, or whatnot. This was actually a zoning use certificate that was issued to International Life Cuisine Restaurant, located at 420 West Colorado. It was for a full-service restaurant. The zoning use certificate was issued on April 27th, 22nd, 2008. On the zoning use certificate, there were conditions of approval that specified no sale, service of alcoholic beverages without a conditional use permit, and no banquet hall operations. Since that time, there has been code enforcement activity regarding the use itself, and I will go into that matter. Based on activity and a request made by Neighborhood Services, which is the code enforcement division of the city's department, there was a request made to actually revoke the zoning use certificate. And what you have before you is essentially an appeal of the community planning director's decision to revoke the zoning use certificate for the use itself. With that said, I will go into even greater detail regarding the property. Currently, the site is a flat, three-person lot. It's a 150 feet wide, 153 feet deep, approximately 18,000 square feet. It is a shopping center use. There are multiple tenants, although this particular restaurant is located in a detached, freestanding structure itself. There is surface parking available between the two different buildings on the project site that's used by all of the commercial owners, operators, and patrons. The particular property, or the building itself, was established way back in 1997. It was constructed in 1996. So half of the building was used at that point in time for a restaurant use. And this was based on the use and occupancy for a Colorado kitchen. And again, this was issued in 1997. Since that time, there have been multiple tenants, all primarily full-service restaurant-type uses. The zoning use certificate in question would be the one that was issued on April 22nd, 2008. This would be for International Life Cuisine. And again, this would be PZUC 2008-00251. On February 17th, 2010, Neighborhood Services conducted investigation and discussed certain aspects that had been brought to our attention. The first being that the full-service restaurant was operating as a banquet hall. Currently, under our zoning code, full-service restaurants may have private parties that do not exceed 30% of the total floor area. So they would be allowed to have a private party, but the entire restaurant would not be able to be shut down or used as a, for private parties or banquet-type activities. So there was a violation made on behalf of the fact that the restaurant was being used for private parties greater than 30% of the floor area. There was also indication that alcohol was being served on the premises. This would require, by our zoning code, a conditional use permit. In this particular property, it is located in the SFMU zone. So again, all alcoholic beverage sales, service, and consumption would require CUP. They do not have an active valid CUP. The third violation was, well, providing music without a live entertainment permit. Again, our zoning code requires that any type of live entertainment, whether it be a live band or a live DJ, have a live entertainment permit issued by our city clerk department. This particular establishment had a live entertainment permit that was valid up until 2009. Unfortunately, it expired since then, and they have been having music without the, a live entertainment permit since that permit's expiration. So this would be the third violation. At the time, there was also a barbecue going on outside to the rear of the property. That barbecue, since the initial inspections has ceased, the property owner has stopped barbecuing outside, and so that violation, in essence, has been removed as well. But again, that was listed on the original violation letter. And, um, last but not least, there was consumption of alcohol, banquet-type live entertainment, and illegal outdoor grilling. You know, in regards to these various other noted items that were specified on the Neighborhood Services violation letter, we've received numerous complaints, or I should say documented complaints, that were taken in by the police department regarding live music. And these have been numerous in terms of having essentially, from a staff report, police report, I should say, that was submitted, that was itemized. You'll notice that since the issuance of the zoning use certificate back in April 2008, there have been, for this particular use alone, 35 calls for service by the police department regarding loud music. So there appears to be a chronic issue regarding the music itself. With that being said, having, having all this information from Neighborhood Services, having the police documentation as well for the calls for service, we received a request by Neighborhood Services to revoke the zoning use certificate. And this was based on the grounds that there was consumption of alcohol on the premises without a valid CUP. There was banquet-type activity going on. Again, this would not be in keeping with our current zoning standards, being in excess of 30% of the total floor area. But not only that, that there is specifically listed on the zoning use certificate that banquet hall-type activity is a prohibited use. Also, in regards to the live entertainment without a required entertainment permit, and again, the illegal outdoor cooking and grilling. The planning director revoked the zoning use certificate based on these items on August 10th, 2010, and an appeal was filed by the business operator, based on the revocation. The appeal itself was spelled out in the staff report. And the appeal had multiple grounds. The first being that there were allegedly non-conforming rights as a banquet hall. And planning staff, in researching the background history, found no such type of documentation substantiating that there were any grandfathering or non-conforming rights for banquet hall-type activity. We included in your staff report all of the various zoning use certificates, use and occupancy, and all the other type of data that we had on record for the various restaurant uses that were in place. And as of 2005, all of those zoning use certificates specifically called out that no banquet hall-type activity is permitted. Also, there was a study session in 2005 with the city council to address alcohol-type-related uses and what to do with banquet hall. There was a, there was the possibility of having a deemed approved for banquet halls that were established, or at least actually had noted activity. This type of list was not approved by city council, but it was recognized in a study session. That list, you also have a copy in front of you. And the International Life Cuisine was not on that list that was known for banquet hall-type activity. So again, there is no documentation. The restaurant is permitted to have private parties operating up to 30% of the floor area, but there is no documentation based on any type of city records that there was ever any type of banquet hall activity that was a permitted use on site. The appellant also cites that the director did not recognize the fact that the business does not sell alcohol in considering the zoning use certificate revocation. And once again, staff points to the zoning use certificates for both the current use and the previous zoning use certificates, as stating all alcohol sales, service, and consumption would require a CUP. So again, there are no grounds to allow them to continue to have alcohol on the premises in terms of its regular restaurant activity. The appeal also listed that the director failed to consider owner's stoppage of use of outside barbecue prior to the revocation. Again, we had Neighborhood Services staff go out there and inspect. There was illegal outdoor grilling. It has ceased since that time, but that was just mentioned as part of the list of violations that precluded, you know, the director from revoking the zoning use certificate. And lastly, the appeal noted that there was a failure to consider non-existence of live ban. And again, this goes to the Glendale Municipal Code that all establishments that feature live entertainment, and this would include a DJ, must have a live entertainment permit as issued by the city clerk office. And so the Life International Cuisine had a live entertainment permit which essentially was expired on May 13th, 2009, and it had not been renewed. And so there was ongoing live entertainment, music, you know, as part of their regular operations. And so we are listing that. And again, this also, I would like to point out that there were 35 calls for service since the time that the zoning use certificate was issued for this particular establishment. And those were so, primarily based on loud, excessive music. So, therefore, for those reasons, staff feels that the direct, community planning director did not exceed his authority, and that the revocation was justified. And so staff is essentially recommending that the planning commission uphold the community planning director's decision to revoke the zoning use certificate. That concludes my presentation. I know that Renee Sada is here from Neighborhood Services, and Lieutenant Davy is here from the police department. I'm available to answer any other questions you may have.
Mr. Lee?
I'm gonna try to remember, Ms. Mai Taitis.
Correct, yes. Very well done.
The original approval of PZUC must have conditions of the hours of operation. Do you know what the hours of operation that was approved for?
Uh, no. The zoning use certificate did not have any hours of operation. Unlike a conditional use permit, which would, would essentially condition activity, hours of operation, or whatnot, a zoning use certificate does not.
Now, if their brochures or their, you know, the menu has hours of operation from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., does that then constitute their, you know, hours of operation?
The zoning use, the zoning code does not specify any hours of operations.
Okay. Because, you know, some of the complaints that came in at 2:00 a.m., excessive noise, and so on. So this operation, the establishment could operate beyond wee hours, and then still the, there would be no problem?
Well, the noise ordinance in our Glendale Municipal Code regulates noise. But in terms of hours of operation for commercial activities, we do not have any listed in the zoning code. So they would essentially be able to operate. That is why you have fast-food restaurants that might have 24-hour operations.
Nice. And the visitation by, you know, observation by the Neighborhood Services inspector, you know, it was made, made pre-extensively, four times, four findings within a month time. Since that time, July was the last time they went out, was there any more complaints or findings after, after that time?
I would defer to the Neighborhood Services inspector to give you that information. But not too much.
Ms. Landrigan?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
You have made reference to this being specifically the April 22nd, 2008 zoning use, correct?
Correct.
There was an April 15th, 2005 zoning use for Life International Cuisine. However, it is not included in here, so we don't know. It says it is part of Exhibit 4, so it, we don't know if it did include banquet hall or not. So if you don't have that, I don't have it in my packet. Secondly, if that's the case, and we're only making reference to the April 22nd, 2008, then the whole first page of this list
Is irrelevant.
is irrelevant. And so your total is
More like 17 or something.
Is 17.
Yeah.
Not 30-something.
I, and this is only based on the dates. If you're looking, starting with number 40?
Correct.
And that starts on May 10th, 2008? Because the zoning use certificate was issued on April 22nd, 2008? If you count the number of items, it would be from 40 to 75, for a total of 35.
Oh, and in addition to music?
So you're saying that every one of the
Some of, some of these are, yes, some of them are burglary alarms that are going off in traffic stops. So, but the, there are, the majority of these calls, though, are still for music and noise.
Do all of the buildings in that cluster have the same address? I would think not.
They, they do have different suite addresses. But again, you'll notice that there is the location info that was submitted by the police department, and the majority of those also refer to Life Cuisine International, Life Cuisine International Restaurant. There is one call for service.
Primetime auto recovery.
Primetime auto recovery for the
But not all of them have a name associated with it. I mean, they have a blank there, so are they related to the restaurant or not because of that? It could have just been happening around there. That's the question I'm asking.
Correct. Then in that case, if you're looking, if you go solely on that information, again, you're still looking at the location information. And I'd be more than happy to go ahead and count up those calls for service.
Okay. Well, I just, it, it wasn't very clear. And the 30, so you're saying the 35 start from 40 on?
Correct. And that would be the date that the zoning use certificate was issued.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time?
One quick one. I'm not sure you can answer it, but the 911 hang-up, I just assumed that means that somebody must have called and
Correct. I would, I would assume so.
Somebody knows what the source was. We'll get that later, okay. I don't have anything else.
All right. Well, I am going to, as part of staff's presentation, I'm going to ask Mr. Sada to join us, and then we'll also have the police department.
Good evening, Chairman Kane, commissioners. Renee Sada, Neighborhood Services.
Do you have any opening remarks, or do you?
I'm here to answer any questions. I believe my request for the revocation pretty much spells out our code enforcement case and our activities and observations. To answer Commissioner Lee's question regarding our last inspection, I believe it was?
Have there been more since? Right. I asked if there was more complaints or inspections made after July.
Based on my last inspection, just, just to get it out of the way, was on September 4th, 2010. There were no violations at that time. They were in compliance at that time. That was done at 9:15 p.m.
What day of the week is that?
That would have been
What was the date?
A Friday or Saturday.
I'm sorry, what date? I have a calendar.
I'm sorry. September 4th.
That's a Saturday, okay.
Saturday.
And they were open?
They were open. There was no music. The grill was gone.
Were they operating?
Just open for business. I believe there's maybe one, one table with four patrons there at the time.
So, okay, so they were operating, and it was just quiet that evening?
Exactly.
And, go ahead, Mr. Lee.
When you made a visit to this premise, you know, during June, July time, you know what time, or what time that you made those visits?
They were all evening inspections, usually on a Friday night or Saturday night. On June, the latest was 11:10 p.m. And the earliest looks around 8, 8:10 p.m. So between 8 and 11 p.m.
So when you were there at 11:10 p.m., it was still
On, on, that was a June 5th, 2010 inspection, and they had live music.
And your, your observation was that they were in a full swing of the, you know, the restaurant operating, the party
It was a
For operation.
Right.
It was not winding down?
No, it was, it was in full swing, I guess you could say.
I'm just referring to their, our operation on their
I understand.
Let's just fill in the blanks a little bit. So the letter we're referencing was from you. It was dated July 21st, which is why the last thing you bring up is dated July 18th. So you just commented that the last time you had been there was in September?
Correct.
What other kind of visits from July 18th through September?
Give me one second here.
Sure.
I did a June 4th, 2010.
That would be before the
Before our
Yeah, I'm talking about something after July 18th.
After July 18th, I believe another inspector was conducting those inspections
Okay.
at that time. I believe it was Inspector Thomas Solar, and I don't have his notes.
Okay, so we don't know what was staffed.
My last inspection was September 4th.
So, so all you can speak to is one more visit in September?
Yeah, witnessed, yes.
Any reason you didn't go after September?
Scheduling issues with our, within our department. They kind of like to spread it around, have different inspectors go out.
Are you seeing other inspectors attended?
The, conducting inspections?
Right, at this property?
Yes. Two other inspectors have inspected that. Thomas Solar and Shay Hill.
It's kind of unfortunate that you don't have their information.
It is. I do apologize.
I mean, you know, a lot of this is pattern of behavior. It looks real bad. You know, you've documented up to July 18th, and after that, you've got one visit. Apparently, other people were there, and we've got nothing on them.
I do believe I have a visit from Inspector Hill here.
Who's that date?
Find that for you one moment, please. I'm sorry. But I do have that in here. I do have a note from Thomas Solar. I'm sorry, sir. Dated August 6th, 2010. It's an email regarding a complaint for loud music at Life Cuisine, 420 West Colorado.
That was August 7th?
That was August 6th, the date of the email. And I do have one more. August 20th, again, from Thomas Solar. This is an email. Noise complaint received again, August 20th, at 1:32 a.m. And then on August 26th, an inspection was conducted, I'm sorry, August 21st, an inspection was conducted by Inspector Hill. At that time, they were, they were not conducting any prior parties.
Did you say August 6th had a private party as well?
It was a noise complaint on August 6th.
And then you guys inspected that?
I believe Mr. Solar was out there.
And there was, in fact, a party?
He just noted the complaint about very loud music.
Okay, so that happened twice, August 6th and August 20th.
20th, I believe.
And then there was a follow-up inspection on the 21st?
On the 21st by Inspector Hill.
Thank you.
Ms. Landrigan?
Which of those inspections, how many inspections? It looks on here that there was only one use as a banquet hall. That I have a two, I see two here. I have two, one on 2710, and the other 2410. I have two, one on two-seven-ten, and the other two-four-ten. But I don't see a banquet hall used being cited anywhere.
I don't know that?
I cite a June fifth, two thousand and ten, July eighteenth, two thousand and ten.
I think I'd like to just clarify what you're reading is just, I know, but that's not necessarily a description of what they were doing. It's, they're just trying to identify a property. So, oh, that's the banquet hall?
You think so?
Yes. I don't think it's a use.
Correct. And that's, and forgive me, Ms. Landergan, if, please do not refer to what the police department submitted in terms of uses, because this is just what was submitted to the police department, at least to what they saw.
Okay.
So this should not be used as a use table whatsoever.
Well, one of the reasons, what I would like to clarify here is, what were the citation times for use as a banquet hall? That's, that's what I would like you to help me clarify here.
June fifth, two thousand and ten?
Okay.
Eleven-ten P.M. The birthday party with live music dancing. And for the business operator, they brought their own alcohol, the patrons. On June eleventh, two thousand and ten, there was a music, a DJ, outdoor barbecuing.
But was that, again, from your notes, was that a private party, or was that just in the course of operating as a restaurant?
The business doors were closed at that, at that time. It was all audible from the exterior.
So you didn't go in? So you don't know what's happening on the interior?
No, sir.
Okay.
What's the time on June eleventh?
Nine-twenty-eight P.M. On June eighteenth, there was another one noted.
Again, this is from exterior? There wasn't any interior visit?
My notes here for June eighteenth, at eight-fifty-five P.M., arrived, barbecue on, no music, no private party. I'm sorry, there's no event at that time?
No event, okay.
They just had the barbecue lit and on. June nineteenth, music was ongoing. No note of a private party. And then July eighteenth, barbecue on, music noted, a wedding party was in full swing.
Now, you, July eighteenth, okay.
July eighteenth, at eight P.M.
And that July eighteenth was a banquet hall use?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Wedding party.
Any questions at this time for Neighborhood Services? Anything you care to add?
Just that, you know, we Neighborhood Services do consider, you know, one violation, it's a violation. We do, we've met with these, the business operators, me and Mr. Inspector Chong, actually. We sat down and went through how they should operate. That's noted in my staff report or my request verification. So we just document ongoing, unpermitted activities. And I'll be honest with you, we go out there alone, we try to avoid any conflict or altercations. We're very just observing. We're not there to break up parties, interfere in any way, but just to make notes and observe.
I do have a question. We received a letter from Vincent Dundee Leasing Company. He referenced receiving a copy of the violation on June fourteenth, indicated he spoke with the operator of the restaurant, and then said that on July seventh, he got a letter from the city saying that all the violations were corrected. Are you aware of any letter on July seventh?
No, sir.
Nothing that you're aware of, all right?
No, this case is open at this time.
All right.
That might have been related to another issue on another occupancy there. I'm, I've known.
But that, the bottom line is, you know nothing of that.
I know nothing.
Okay. Anything else for Neighborhood Services? Yes?
Not for Neighborhood Services, no.
Oh, all right. Was there something you, well, if there's nothing else, please sit down?
Thank you.
And there was something you wanted to add?
Actually, thank you, Chairman Kane, for bringing that up. I wanted to mention that we received, you have on the die is two letters. One from Vincent Dundee Leasing Company as the property owner. And so as you read through here, the, it goes through the various items, and obviously he is in support of keeping the restaurant open. And that, in regards to the violation allegations, that these are not, not founded. We also have another letter from a Mr. Lance Sales that was emailed to me, and then I have forwarded on to you. And he lives in the properties directly to the rear. Those would be multifamily residential condominiums directly to the rear, and those would be the individuals most impacted by the loud noise, most likely. In regards to Ms. Landergan's request, I apologize. It appears that, that missing zoning use certificate did not get copied into your packet. If you'd like, I'd be more than happy to go ahead and have Ida make copies for you. This would be the one that you mentioned in two thousand and five?
Thank you.
That specified, again, no sales, service of alcoholic beverages without a conditional use permit. So we'll make note of that.
Thank you.
Okay. I, go ahead.
In answer to Commissioner Landergan's question about the number of times they were cited for banquet hall use, page three of your staff report also notes the lease department had an additional time that they noted.
Thank you.
And on that note, I would like to have whoever is representing the police department approach this, please.
Good evening, Steve Davy.
What, what's your rank? Is it?
I'm a lieutenant.
Lieutenant, thank you, Mr., Lieutenant Davy.
Thank you.
You've earned that privilege to be called that.
Thank you. And I do on a daily basis.
Int introductory remarks?
I'd like to comment, if I can, on the calls for service. That might clarify a few things, and you might not have any questions after, maybe you would. If you start from, as you're saying correctly, May twentieth, I believe it is, or May tenth, sorry. It's going to be on the second page, line, that's May thirtieth, I guess, line forty-two. No, I'm sorry. It's May tenth, line forty. So if you go from there on down, there's twenty-one noise complaints that the police department received as a call for service. In other words, send a police car to this address, and it was to the International Life Cuisine at four-twenty West Colorado. That was the originating location for the complaint of noise. And we have a variety of types of calls that can be entered. So there's a, if you see four-fifteen, that's the penal code for disturbance of the peace. So that's just what our CAD system utilizes to indicate what type of call it is. So you'll see four-fifteen M.U.S., which is disturbing music, or music that's too loud. And then you'll see on, on the very last page, on the very last line, you'll see four-fifteen N.O.I., which is four-fifteen noise. Now, that could be people yelling. That could be a loud car. It could be music coming from the facility. You know, it, it could be a variety of things. But if you take all of those four-fifteen type of calls, you add them up, we had three in two thousand and eight that we responded to. We had six in two thousand and nine, and then we had twelve in two thousand and ten. We also had a call of a assault, a domestic violence assault. Generally, that's, you know, two persons in a cohabitating relationship beating up on each other, one beating up on the other. There were other calls for service at the facility. I can't really discern from this sheet what was the nature of the call, such as the A.S.T. P.O.L., which is assist police. Normally, that's created when a police officer goes out. It could be from our agency, it could be another police department that is there for some sort of investigation, and they need help themselves. So they call nine-one-one, just like the rest of the citizenry does. There's several traffic stops that might be in there. There's a few burglary alarms. I can't stand before you and testify that that particular call is, as a result of something going wrong at the business. It could be, but it also could be just that that's where the person, the officer, is deciding to pull over in his patrol car, decided to stop. And the officer looks at the address and calls out that address as to his location. So that's what's registered in our CAD system. So the traffic stops could be related to that facility, or it might not be. That's obviously not why we're here. The assist fire calls for service, again, those are at the facility. And what happens when fire calls us? Normally, they're there to render aid, you know, do their duty. And we routinely roll when there's a crowd that's gathering around them. Either they're interfering with the fire department's responsibilities, or they're antagonistic to the fire department personnel. You know, they want to fight them, or they don't want to let them in, or whatever the case might be. Then they call us, and we go there and assist them, basically keeping the folks back so they can do their job. So we had a couple of those calls. So that answers that for those. And I believe there was a police report that was referenced in the staff report. And I believe that's going to be report number one-zero-dash-eight-six-two-six. And I'd like to comment on that briefly, and then that would be the end of what I would like to say. I spoke to the officer that wrote this report, who responded out to the location. His name's Don Tucker. And Officer Tucker told me that he had received the call and was dispatched there on May twenty-second. It was actually May twenty-second, just after midnight, but the origination of the call occurred on May twenty-first, just before midnight of this year. And when he got there, there was quite a bit of loud music. There was also a bunch of folks there. He wound up making contact with a gentleman who identified himself as Narar Marterosian. And this, and this is all what Donald Tucker told me. Mr. Marterosian indicated that he was the manager of the facility, and at some point said that his, his brother, Gary Baronian, is actually the owner of the restaurant. At one point, Officer Tucker asked Marterosian to see his permit for amplified music, because there was obviously music coming from inside. So Mr. Marterosian showed Donald Tucker a permit that was expired in May of two thousand and eight, I believe. Or, I'm sorry, it was issued in May of two thousand and eight, was good for one year. So it was expired at the time, since he was there in May of two thousand and ten. There was a bunch of folks that were coming out of the, of the facility, and they were yelling and cussing at the two officers that were there. At some point, the more sober ones drug in, the more intoxicated ones, drug them back inside. Officer Tucker, seeing that there were people intoxicated, asked Marterosian if he had a permit to sell alcohol. Mr. Marterosian indicated he didn't speak English that well and didn't really understand the question, so another individual translated for him. And he said he did have a permit to provide alcohol. And then Officer Tucker asked to see the permit, and then Mr. Marterosian said he did not have the permit, but that, quote, "They bring their own alcohol to the restaurant." That's a quote from Tucker, who was translating what Marterosian had told him. So people inside the facility were bringing their own alcohol, and that they do not serve it inside, just, you know, if you bring your own booze, you can drink it. So that's the substance of what Officer Tucker had learned while he was at the facility on that particular call for service. They eventually left the location and documented this in a police report. And that's the end of my opening remarks.
Ms. Landergan?
I'm going to ask you a question you may not have the answer to, so, not, it's all right, but if an assist fire call, could it be because there was an occupancy that was exceeding the fire marshal's?
Could be. That could be.
And that, that is a possibility of why the fire department might have been?
It's a possibility, yes.
There's no record of that?
There could be in the call for service. You know, I'd have to do further research to determine if that was, in fact, the case. And it might not actually be documented in the closing remarks of the call for service. Have to call the fire department personnel or the police officer. But that is a possibility, and I don't know if that was the case with these.
Thank you.
Following on that, whatever the call, nature of the call might, might have been, that you were asked to assist fire. So do you know the nature of the assist, assistance that they were requesting for?
Why the fire department was there, I don't know. The nature of the assistance, it's generally to deal with people.
So they were getting?
They're either?
Rowdy and?
They're either rowdy, or there's too many. You know, when somebody, and on the good citizen side of this, and we've seen it happen many a time, where a relative, or a friend, or, you know, somebody gets sick or injured, they're on the ground, everybody wants to gather around and lend support, or rub their hand, or do something. Fire department, it interferes with them. You know, they have to have plenty of space for their equipment, their personnel. So sometimes, you know, in trying to be a good citizen, will get called as well.
But, but to be fair, Lieutenant Davy, we're just presupposing now. Nobody really knows?
No, I don't.
And we're just, oh, it could be this, it could be that. We just don't know for sure.
That's right. That's right. I'm just commenting as to, these are the types of calls you see on the printout. We just printed out every call that the police department responded there to. The only calls I'm particularly, obviously commenting about are the four-fifteen music. It's very easy. There's one reason why we're there, and the location is very clear.
I just could ask a question about the nine-one-one hang-up. I assume the call came through and nothing was going on, or they hung up and you didn't, did you respond on those?
That's correct. We, we respond on those. As a matter of policy, whenever nine-one-one is dialed and the operator doesn't communicate, or the caller does not communicate with our operator, our dispatcher, either they hang up, or they can't say anything. We have both. We dispatch the unit.
Okay.
As is the case here. And on the nine-one-one hang-up calls, can tell you very quickly that?
Yes, so?
Obviously was no crime that occurred, because we did not take a police report. We call those code nines.
Okay.
Nine-one-one hang-up call. That's the term that we use when dispatch cars. Thank you. Welcome.
Anything else for Lieutenant Davy? Thank you very much, sir.
Very much.
All right. Unless Steph has something else to add, I'd like to get into the appellate's part of the case. Very good. Procedurally, we have Mr. Toboni, and for purposes of this hearing, we also have the manager of the restaurant. I'm going to consider him as part of your, your team for fifteen minutes. There is also a card for the owner of the property, but I'm going to consider him a, unless you want him as part of your team, he'll just be an interested party and speak during the public comment. So please, begin.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name's Derek Toboni. I represent the operator of the business. Let me go back a little bit and start with something a little different. The history given by the staff is a tad incomplete. The restaurant, there's been a restaurant on this site since nineteen forty. Restaurant on the site for seventy years. In nineteen ninety-nine, the restaurant was torn down, replaced with a shopping complex, which included a new restaurant, and has been a full-service restaurant on the site ever since. That's why the restaurant use predates the two thousand and two amendments to the zoning code allowing or disallowing banquet hall use. And in fact, there were full-service restaurants permitted on the site before two thousand and two. One of the things that you didn't get was, there was an application made in two thousand and three, I believe, for the International Life Cuisine Church, International Life Cuisine. And it indicated, at four-twenty Colorado Boulevard, this is, was issued of ZUZUC two thousand and three dash oh-two-three-one. The application indicates that it is for, open for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and private parties. Now, one of the things which is interesting about the way Glendale does things is Glendale's the only city I know, any place for that matter, that defines a banquet hall as any restaurant that allows one-third of its space to be used one time ever for a private party. One time ever using one-third of your seats makes you a banquet hall and is illegal under the code, unless you have a conditional use permit, which, because I'm going through this with another client, is at least a ten to twenty thousand dollar application and in process. I don't know of a single restaurant, and I think Mr. Dundee will speak to that, because I've spoken to him, who's operated restaurants for forty years. He was the one who bought the restaurant in nineteen forty. No restaurant would turn down somebody who wants to have an event there one night. Want to shut down a birthday party? You want to take the whole place over? Half the place over? That's just great, love to have the business. But under, under Glendale zoning code, that makes you a banquet hall. Most banquet hall owners are? Most banquet hall owners, or most restaurant owners, don't know that. They don't know that a banquet hall is not defined by the city as somebody, as a business that only opens occasionally, doesn't have regular hours, doesn't have regular days, but a business that has one private event, one time, that uses more than 30% of their seats. What this restaurant has is it's done exactly what, in terms of banquet hall use, what the prior, previous restaurants are. It's a regular restaurant, it's open regular days and regular hours. If you want to come and rent the place for the night for a private event, they, like any other restaurant in virtually anyplace else, will rent it to you. They're happy to close the doors to fill the place. It only has 45 seats. How big a banquet can you have with 45 seats? And you realize what 30% means. It means that if there's more than 14 people in the place from the same party, you've violated Glendale's zoning ordinance. 14 people show up, you're a banquet hall. You've now violated the law. What you've, let me talk about the four things of the city, the four reasons for the revocation. First, live music and excessive noise. Live music is banned without a permit. They apparently had a permit, it expired. It does not automatically renew. They have ceased that. The last several inspections have indicated they don't have live music, and they will pledge to you they will not have any more live music. Excessive noise. Excessive noise is not a zoning issue. A zoning use certificate is issued to ensure compliance with the Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, which is zoning only. It's not their noise ordinance, and it's not 415, the penal code. There are remedies for excessive noise, but a zoning, revocation of the zoning use certificate is not one of those remedies, because noise is not a zoning issue. There's nothing in the zoning code which prohibits having noise. Interestingly about that, you can have, you can't have live music, can't have a live DJ or a live band, but you can put two speakers in there and about, get 130 decibels out of them by turning up your stereo. That's not a violation of the live music ordinance. The amount of volume has nothing to do with it. It's whether or not it's a live person. Interestingly, one person playing the guitar acoustically is a violation, but Led Zeppelin through an amplified system with outdoor speakers is not. What my client pledged was they will not have any more live music, and they will keep the noise down. What I would like to ask, and maybe it's out of term, I'd like to ask the police department if they issued any citations at any time for noise in the last two years. Because I understand the answer's no. Not a single citation has been issued for violation of 415, or any other distributing the peace ordinance, or law, in the last two years. Second, outdoor barbecue. That has ceased. In fact, it was a very heavy, large, truck moved barbecue, and it is gone. Third is no alcohol sales, service, or consumption. Well, I'm going to actually look at the zoning use certificate. It doesn't say that. What it says is conditional use, conditions no sales, service of alcohol or alcoholic beverages without a conditional use permit. There's nothing in state law, nothing in the Glendale Municipal Code that prohibits a restaurant patron from bringing their own alcohol into a restaurant. Restaurant can't sell it and cannot serve it without, without a conditional use permit and without a permit from the ABC. There's nothing to stop the patron bringing it in. And my, Mr. Garcia is here, and I'm sure he'll tell you if I'm wrong. But I'm not. Hi, Mike, it's good to see you. What, the one time they went out and talked to them, there was people drinking there, and they were told directly they brought their own alcohol in. The city has done no inspection to find out if the restaurant ever, in fact, sells alcohol. They assure me they do not. They do not, and I've never sold alcohol. They don't have a permit. But people are allowed to bring it in, as you can in any restaurant. Nothing to stop you bringing alcohol into a McDonald's and having it with your Happy Meal. The owner can decide they don't want you to, but there's nothing in the law that prohibits that. And again, that's not, alcohol consumption is not a reason to revoke zoning use certificate, because, one, zoning certificate doesn't prohibit alcohol consumption; two, neither does the zoning code, and neither does state law. There was a comment that there was a letter received, Mr. Dundee received a letter, he attached it to one of his notes. It's dated July 7th, 2010, and says, has a date of original notice 42710, although what that refers to, I don't know. Says, "Dear owner, an inspection has been conducted by the neighborhood services staff at the above referenced property," reference property being 412 West Colorado. "All the violations originally brought to your attention in the notice noted above have been found to be corrected. Thank you for making these required corrections."
Could you repeat that address again?
412 West Colorado.
412 West Colorado.
Yeah. It is Mr. Dundee's understanding of a couple of things, and he'll go into this in more detail.
Yes, I know.
That, one, all the violations have been resolved, and they continue to be resolved, which is what the last couple of inspections have indicated. Two, that there has been a restaurant continuity on this property, except for the time that was, building was being torn down and rebuilt since 1940. In fact, as the restaurant and other uses on the property predate all of the local businesses, particularly departments that are behind it, the people that are complaining about the noise, those buildings went in after the restaurant use started, long after the restaurant use started. And he'll tell you that he was there long before they were there. They moved into him, he didn't move into them. And that, as far as he knows, he, like any other restaurant owner, would be happy or willing to rent the facility out on an occasional basis to a group that wanted to rent it for a private event, birthday party, wedding, whatever it happened to be. And he has no reason to suspect this business is not exactly the same. Like I said, it is an indication in 2003 that the business was at that time handling occasional private parties, and in fact, was given a zoning use certificate. Obviously, we don't, we can't, we can't tell you exactly what happened before, but it's inconceivable to me that in the years before 2001, there wasn't a single private event on this part, a single private event in this facility. And that's all you need for grandfathering. If the use pre-exists at the time the zoning law changes, then you can't use a non-discretionary zoning certificate to outlaw an existing, prior, permitted, or non-grandfathered in use. And there is indications in the file of that. Lastly, I looked through some of the police and police log myself. I actually got a copy of the city's entire file on this building. Some of the times when they went out, they found the business, they got noise complaints, but the business was in fact closed. In fact, nobody there. Other times went out, there was no music coming from the location whatsoever. I think one time they went out, and the music was coming from a location half a block away. In terms of being able to take away the right of the business owner to operate any type of business, which is what the city's attempting to do by revoking the ZUC, they have the burden, I believe, of showing that the business as it presently constituted does not comply with Title 30. They can't do that. There's no more outdoor barbecue. Alcohol consumption is not illegal to alcohol sales or service, and there's no indication that this establishment ever sold or served alcohol. They may allow it to be consumed there. That is not a violation of Title 30. Banquet hall use in this restaurant goes back far, far before the 2002 change of the law. Excessive noise is not a reason, because it's not in the zoning code, and they will cease any live music, and they have ceased live music. Do you have any questions for me? Can I turn it over to the actual manager?
Mr. Sheed?
I would just ask, there seems to be a relatively long history of complaints, quote-unquote violations, items that caused police to go out, items that caused city inspectors to go out, and they all, there's a pattern of the same things, the loud noise, the consumption of alcohol. At any point that you know of, did the tenant, the owner or manager of the business, respond back to the city and say, "I'm confused, I think I'm okay. Can we sit down and clarify this? Can you give me some direction that you know of?"
No. No, what I have is the indication that if there's a problem, they try and take care of it. The police have asked them to turn down music, and they have done that. And that, not live music, it's turned down basically recorded music, from what I can understand from the, from what I read from the police reports. What I mostly focus on is the fact that the police haven't issued any citations. If there's public drunkenness, that's a violation of the penal code. They can issue a citation. They haven't. If there's excessive noise, they can issue a citation. They haven't. Those are police matters. Now, there's nothing to stop me if I don't like your business, calling the police on it every single day for something. But the police come out, and if they don't issue any citations after a year, is it me that's calling? That's out of line? Or is it you? And that's the problem I have here. Is it somebody calling on this business that doesn't like the business? I don't know. What I know is there's a bunch of calls, the police come out, and there's no citations. What that would seem to indicate to me is, the business isn't violating any law, and if the only issue is noise, or public drunkenness, those aren't zoning issues anyway. There's no grounds to revoke a zoning use certificate for something which is not a violation of Title 30. A zoning use certificate is to ensure compliance with Title 30 of the code. If it's not a zoning issue, it's not a grounds to revoke a zoning use certificate. You can't take away a business permit, because you don't like who he's married to. You know, it has to, has to do directly with Title 30, and noise doesn't.
Charlie?
I have a question about the alcohol. I guess it's up to the interpretation of, you know, what is legal and illegal with the alcohol consumption on the premises. When customer brings in the alcohol, and they consume the alcohol in your restaurant, what do you do as a restaurant operator? Do you provide them with the glasses, or how do they consume their alcohol?
Since I think you'd rather have them drinking from a glass than drinking from a bottle, I'd imagine to provide them with a glass.
So, but if you provide the glasses to the customers, is that considered as a serving?
It's not serving alcohol, it's serving a glass.
Okay. What about if, and this may go to the manager, is it practiced, and if the customer comes in with the bottle, for employee of the restaurant to take the bottle and take it into the kitchen?
No, because then the employee would have to bring it back out to serve it. I would think it has to stay on the bottle.
So if the employee of the restaurant takes the bottle, then that will consider it as a serving?
I don't know. If he brings it back, it does. I think, and I've never seen this in a restaurant, if I bring in a bottle of wine to a restaurant, they can bring out an ice bucket and put it down right there. They leave it on the table, they don't take it into the back. I've never seen him take it into the back. But if he took it into the back, and then he brought it back out and poured from it, yeah, that's serving.
It just happens to be that I was there very short time today, at 4:20, and I followed the gentleman inside the restaurant, holding vodka bottle. And he handed the vodka bottle to the waitress. She took it, took it into the bag and set it on the kitchen table, where I went in to ask for this menu. There were six gentlemen already intoxicated inside the restaurant drinking. I did not stay, you know, long enough to, you know, for, to see her serve the vodka. But, you know, I could, I mean, by receiving the bottle of vodka, taking it inside the kitchen, I mean, one can just, you know, have the people intoxicated in there, you know, I can, I can make the quick judgment right there. So what constitutes, and I guess, you know, again, you know, what is legal and illegal of the alcohol consumption on your premises, but my conclusion, just observing that, within that few minutes' time, you know, just happens to be following that, you know, customer in, you know, handing over the vodka bottle, you know, it was, I concluded that as, you know, serving the alcohol.
Was there already alcohol on the table?
That, you know, I did not make that close observation, but, you know, I did witness the handing over the vodka bottle to the waitress, and waitress taking it back to back room, on the kitchen table, and I saw the vodka bottle when I was picking up the menu.
Yes, yeah, I, if they, if they serve it, I would think that's much closer to a violation. And then...
That's why I was asking the practice of your restaurant, whether or not when someone brings in the bottle of bottle, that you, for you to receive the bottle and take it in?
My understanding is to leave it on the table, but I'll have him direct, his answer to that directly, because I don't, I haven't been there. But I also don't understand that people are there that often drinking. It's usually people coming for dinner, bring something to drink with dinner. I don't think it's a, it's a restaurant that doesn't...
Four o'clock to be the senior special, wouldn't it?
Happy hour.
It shouldn't be happy hour. Happy hour.
Very happy hour. It would, you know, it's, the restaurant makes money selling food. It doesn't make money putting glasses and ice on the table, so...
It was just my observation.
I don't know, it just, also doesn't have an alcohol license, and they don't, they're not selling it, so the only way they make money is selling food.
Peron? You're going to blame this man?
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Melis Peronian, general manager of the restaurant. So, do you have any questions? I mean, I would like to just confirm that we don't serve alcohol. I mean, we don't buy, we don't sell alcohol. That's, I want to just confirm. Sometimes they bring the alcohol and ask him to put in the ice, so we can take the bottle, put in the, some packet with the ice, and bring it back. But we don't open, we don't do. They're going to serve by themselves. They're going to open the bottle, and they're going to put it, and that's it. We just can supply with the ice whatever they request, but we don't buy or sell any alcohol.
Mr. Garcia, what is the, you know, I mean, the other gentleman was referring to that, and he's referring to that. What is the law governing consumption of alcohol?
With respect to alcohol?
Customer bringing, yeah, to alcohol, yes.
You know, I'd probably feel more comfortable answering that when the, when the public part of the conference is over.
Anything else I can? And we also, I'm sorry, we corrected all violations, like barbecue, so, and we didn't do it right away, because it took a couple days for us, because it was very big and heavy, so we arranged a pickup, so they come and took it. So regarding the live music, it happens a couple times. I'm not going to deny, but it's done, so no more banter or anything, so it's corrected already. The party's also...
Keep going.
Yeah, and regarding parties, it's, we have a very small place, it's like 45 people. And to have a birthday party, I mean, 14, 15 people, I mean, 15 people already violates the law, because it's more than 33% of 45 people. So, I mean, we cannot just count, so we do just guestimate, and by guestimate, we, I mean, serving our customers, let's say. If they come 20 people, so if it's necessary to reject, we can reject. I mean, but we have to survive in the business also, to have a, I mean, to run the business. We cannot be selective, because now it's very tough time. I mean, if, instead of 14 people coming, 20 people, I'm not denying, yes, we're taking, but, I mean, what else to do?
Mr. Garcia, one more question.
Sure.
As I asked about the hours of operation to our staff, and PZUC does not really govern or enforce, put limit on the hours of operation. I am assuming that you put yours, the hours of operation from 11 to 11, I guess out of courtesy to the neighbors in the, in the early hours, 2:00 AM, and so on, that you will definitely be bothering people with loud music, or any type of activities in your restaurant. So when you put this type of hours of operation, and, you know, a lot of the observations and the complaint letter that came in, that you were in operation till 2:00 AM in the morning. Now, what is your, you know, I mean, do you observe the 11:00 PM, and what's your policy on that? And then, you know, the complaints, or the observations, or the, oh, not the citation, but the, some of the late discoveries? Can you, can you explain?
Yeah. I want to just make some clarification. I'm just recently started managing this restaurant for two, three months, so I'm doing some corrective actions. So one of the noises, complaining to neighbors, was probably it's our door, because it's a glass door, so as you know, the noise goes through the glass door very fast, and it's, basically, it's not protecting. So what we're going to do as a corrective action, we're going to change the door with this special, isolated wooden door. And we try and, of course, to keep time of operation from 11 to 11, I mean, you know, most of the time, but sometimes it goes to the 12, which is, happens very rare. I mean, we cannot just tell the customers, you know, please go, I mean, you know, if they come at 10:30, so we have to serve them, right, with their food, and they cannot eat within half an hour. So basically, we're waiting, maybe in some cases, you know, 12, or 1, or it depends. But mostly, we are basically, even sometimes we close at 10:00. So if we see there is no any work, I mean, or anything, we just close and go home.
Look, I think the complaints that came in was a live, loud music, you know, at 12:00 in the morning.
Maybe that time, I wasn't working as a general manager, because I took over last two, three months during my operation. I mean, I didn't hear, have any complaints. I mean, and most of the time, we've been closed by 11, 11:00, or even by 10, 10:30.
Other questions? I have a couple. I have a couple. So, the position that we're hearing from your attorney is that your grandfathered in as banquet hall. Assuming that was the case, then what percentage of your business would you say right now are banquets versus regular walk-in, you know, regular open hours, regular serving of individual customers?
I would say probably 60, 70, and more percentage, it's just the walking people, I mean, they're coming four people, six people, eight people, and maybe in the case, I mean, we love to switch it to banquet hall, but, I mean, we cannot afford in this situation, I mean, it's cost a lot of money, it's about 20, or 20 something thousand to go through all this process. So, and I don't think it's necessarily, because we don't have a lot of people, I mean, coming, and we are just a 45 space, we are a very small restaurant, and we are open seven days a week, mostly.
What, I mean, obviously, you have a particular cuisine, but obviously, you must have some very loyal customers. What seems to be your most popular two or three items?
Oh, it's shish kebab, of course.
That makes sense, I suppose. You know what a corkage fee is?
Yes, corkage fee, we, sometime we do it complimentary, I mean, you know, we don't want to like, you know...
Sometimes you do complimentary, other times you charge them a little bit to open the bottle.
Most of them, corkage fees are $5, usually, we take, approximately, but most of the time, it's a complimentary, I would say, maybe 95% or 99%. I mean, they're going to bring, and they don't bring a lot, I mean...
Your attorney's going to need, in rebuttal, address this, because right now, I'm sitting here going, if you're charging $5 as a corkage fee, you're serving alcohol.
Exactly.
So I'm sure he's writing up quick right now to be able to address that. I appreciate your candor, but I think that might be a problem.
Yeah, but again, as I told, it's 99%, we're just doing it complimentary, so probably I didn't, and I'm, again, I'm new in two, three months, and, you know, I'm still learning what's the proper way to do, you know, regarding the banquet halls, regarding the serving, and all stuff. What I know by my experience, which is law, we don't buy, we don't sell alcohol.
What was happening earlier today, then, with the, with the party that I've heard our fellow commissioner Lee talking about?
Which, this, today's party?
Today's party?
Uh-huh. I mean, six people, we consider it a party.
Four o'clock.
Four, I mean...
You know, two can be a party, but, you know...
I don't know if it's, yeah.
What was going on there? How did, how did they show up, how does the booze come in?
They came, I mean, I wasn't present at that time, but my understanding, they usually, I can tell you the usual how it happens, sometime they come, I mean, bring their own vodka or whatever, and ask the waitress to bring some alcohol, I mean, ice with the packet or whatever, and she takes, I mean, that bottle, puts in the packet ice, and brings it back, or the same place. I don't know how it happened, why he, he went in the kitchen, I mean, the customers...
No, he didn't go in there, he just passed it to the waitress.
To waitress, yeah, probably, and she put it in the, I mean, ice bucket and bring it back, because they don't like drink vodka warm, they like to drink chilled.
On a weekday, how many people would you say you serve in the lunch hour?
It depends.
Average.
It depends, because I will tell you right now, we are in the process of remodeling, because we want to serve fast food, so we, our, our, all this, in planning department of Glendale, because we're trying to expand the restaurant, to put the special barbecue, like Brazilian style barbecue.
Almost a takeout kind of...
Yeah, and we want to switch all this, our operation to takeout, because...
You've been there a couple months, so before you started the remodeling, just, what do you think your average lunch crowd is?
Average lunch crowd?
Weekdays?
Maybe there is a 10 people, maybe there is a 2 people.
And then...
I mean, it's, it's not stable.
And then your average dinner crowd?
Again, it's, maybe there is nobody, maybe there is a 15, 20 people, or, it's, it's hard to say, I don't know.
But you're open, you're open every day?
Every day, yes.
Eleven to eleven?
And we're losing money, I mean, and we're losing a lot of money, I mean, so that's why we're trying to switch the business to takeout, because we want to put, so expand our place, put the barbecue, and start serving from outside, inside, to make it like more fast food than going to, I mean, more like shish kebab.
That's important for us to know, because we've seen patterns of behavior in the past where restaurants are locked up, you know, when it's supposed to be their regular hours, and then they, people go in and can't be served. So, so every day, you're, somebody's there serving food.
Yes, of course, every day we have there some. Sometimes, once in a while, we are closing Sundays, you know, we're tired or whatever, but it's, mostly, we are open seven days, from 11 to 11. And again, we're switching to fast food serving. Right now, our plants and everything in the city of Glendale, and they're, they're supposed to issue the permits and everything, they put on hold because of this hearing, because, like, I don't know, they have rights to stop it or whatever, so that's a different issue, but that's our go-to.
You've been in the restaurant business in the past, or is this your first time being a restaurant?
I'm like entrepreneur, so I'm making the, some businesses, like, you know, but I have experience, yeah, of course, yeah.
Okay. I don't know that I have any questions right now. There'll be a rebuttal period shortly, which you can participate in, along with your attorney.
Sure.
Anything else right now?
But we do a lot of corrections, so basically, the noise is going to be eliminated, because we're changing the doors, it's going to be wooden door, so we're not going to have live music, so I'm going to, so everything is going to be under control.
All right.
Much more than before, so...
Thank you, sir. Again, you'll have a chance shortly again. Staff had a fairly lengthy preliminary overview of the, of the case, is there anything you want to add before we go to public comment?
I'm not sure I'm going to refer to City Attorney Mike Garcia. Would you like me to address Mr. Toboni's issue regarding the application at this point in time, or later on in the hearing?
I guess it's up to the commission.
If it's appropriate, there's no reason not to bring it up now. If procedurally you want it later, just...
Well, sure, I'll just mention it, and Billy can correct me if I'm wrong, but the application that Mr. Toboni refers to did say, I think, breakfast, lunch, and private parties. However, the, what's in the application doesn't control what the permitted use is, the permitted use is whatever stated on the ZUC. And so the permitted use on the ZUC was full-service restaurant. And so from our, from our perspective, it's not, it's not relevant what's on the application.
Oh, okay, so that the private parties was on their application?
Correct. It was not on the approved ZUC.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Can I ask City Attorney a question?
Ms. Landrigan, go ahead.
Are you continuing?
No, I, at some point, I wanted to address the issue of the non-conforming status of banquet hall. I could do that now, I can do it.
Perfect, if you don't mind.
Please do.
To start, I would say that the burden to show that there is a valid legal non-conforming use is on the property owner. The issue of whether or not there's a legal non-conforming use means that there has to have been an active and continuous operation of that non-conforming use prior to the change in the law. So prior 2002, from our view, it's not sufficient that at some point, there may have been a private party. It had to be a continuous part of their, of their business at the time the law changed. And I think that what information is in your report and was presented was that they were listed, their use was listed continuously as full-service restaurant. And then subsequent to that, in the ZUCs that they received after, at that time, the use was always listed as full-service restaurant. Even though there's, there is a process, if you, if you were non-conforming as of 2002, when the code changed, there was a process in the code to get a, basically, it was a non-conforming use CUP for banquets, and that doesn't appear to be the case here. In addition, you have to maintain, even if you had a non-conforming use, you'd have to continue that operation continuously, and if there was any discontinuance of this for, our period is two years, then, again, that would not be valid, if that was discontinued for two years, then that would also be another reason why there's no, there's no non-conforming use here. And again, I would point to the fact that all the ZUCs refer to this as a full-service restaurant, and even all the ZUC applications, except for the 2003 one, refer to it as a request to operate a full-service restaurant at the location. So, that's sort of what the law is on what a legal non-conforming use is. It's not just the fact that prior 2002, you could operate banquets at a restaurant without any additional regulation, you actually had to have been doing that continuously when the law changed, and continued to do so after, so...
And that would be documented through receipts from banquets and things like that?
Whatever, yeah, whatever evidence they have, or if they did have a CUP for something that said they were going to do this type of activity, something of that nature. But from my view, it doesn't appear to be in the record. Obviously, it's ultimately up to the commission to decide that.
All right, thank you. Ms. Landrigan, you had a question for...
I did.
Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Garcia, on a ZUC, does it go with the land, or does it go with the building? So if the building is torn down, and it had a use, and then another building is put there, does that mean the use, it's a whole different restaurant, it's a whole different building, it's a whole different square footage?
Well, actually, under our code, the ZUC actually goes just with the business, so when the business changes, or the ownership, then you have to apply for a new ZUC. In a case where a building's actually torn down, and that use ceases to exist, they would need to apply for a new ZUC for that new use.
So, because that was the reference, is that it had been, so when this building was removed, the original...
99, yeah.
Restaurant, and a new one was put in, all bets are off.
Yes.
Thank you.
And when you say business, you're saying business use or business itself?
I think it's the business itself, it's the name, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's every time you change the name or the business.
But it's not just the use, it's the actual, the ownership of the business.
Or even a change in name.
Great, so it's beyond just the use, it's the actual ownership. Thank you.
Now, I would say, if you had, to some extent, it's true that if you've been operating invested right, and all you're doing is changing the name of it, or the ownership has changed, and they would, you know, theoretically be entitled to a new ZUC for that type of business. You don't just extinguish the use just because there's a new owner or a new business. But in a case where, for example, the building is torn down, then yeah, arguably, the use is extinguished at that point.
Other questions for Mr. Garcia? Ms. Zemetidis, you had anything else to add? All right.
Mr. Garcia, summarize.
Oh, okay. All right, well, in that case, I'm going to go to public speakers, or the public cards, rather. First speaker card is Vincent Dundee.
I appreciate the opportunity to say a few good words for the restaurant. First, I'd like to address one problem that we've had on the property that the police department has not mentioned. Across the street from this particular location, a mall that my wife and I own, and we've owned the property since 1940, is that there's a large banquet room across, a banquet hall across the street. And I had a tremendous problem that their valet parking was using our parking lot for their, parking their cars. They also, when the banquet is going on across the street, they, that crowd came in and used our parking lot. Now, there's no notice when the, when the police were called, who these people were. So I went over to talk to the banquet people, and told them that this cannot be done anymore. I sent them a certified letter, and told them that we're not going to be responsible for their clients parking on our parking lot. We have a dentist, and we have a printer, and they close early, so it's a perfect place for people to park. So what we've done now, we've added video cameras that, over the whole parking lot. It would cost me around $3,000 or $4,000, but now we're able to monitor what's going on. I also put a big chain, so when the restaurant closes at night, they are to put the chain across the parking lot, so that people who are not customers of our mall can't use the parking lot. So I think that's one problem which hasn't been addressed. A lot of the problems that the police may have come, could not be, or may not be even our customers. But as you know, there is a large banquet room across the street. Also, these people have invested a tremendous amount of money in the property. And recently, they came to me and asked if I would okay with the planning department, an addition, I'll go over here to this map. I twisted my bank, so I'm going to go careful.
Is there a microphone over there? Is there a mic? Sir, hold on a moment. You're outside mic range, I'm afraid.
If Mr. Dundee comes up to the monitor behind the commissioners, we'd be able to go ahead and have it on...
Yeah, we need to have you picked up on the mic.
Watch out for the step.
Watch your step. Okay.
Watch the step, don't touch the screen, stand up straight.
I won't touch that, I promise. Right here, right there is a little section, which I approved their plan, they hired an architect to put a fast food, little fast food section there. So the way they explained to me that they're going to go for chicken kebabs and beef kebabs to go, and they're going to have delivery service. So I think the restaurant is changing his whole attitude towards, you know, the operation. Now, I don't know if you read my letter or not, but I have been in the restaurant business for a long time. I own Christopher's in Glendale, which is now torn down, and is the Glendale Cancel Center, the Scotch Miss Restaurant in La Cremona, the Kona Kai Inn in La Cremona, Governors, Sherlock's, and Flint Ridge Catering in Palm Springs and Pasadena. I'm a director, I was a director of the California Dining Association. So I think I'm qualified in the restaurant business. And it is true that when a customer comes to you and says, I'm going to have a birthday party for 30 people, you'd be awful dumb, if you're in the restaurant business, not to accept that. In fact, when I had Christopher's, the same building, the city of Glendale, several times took over the whole restaurant when one of your good workers retired. But as far as I know, from my experience, this is a full-service restaurant. I've gone there for lunch several times, I've taken food home from there. The banquet is true, maybe they're not handling the banquet service right, but I have talked with them, and explained to them that they must follow the rules. And I was sorry about that letter, there was a little confusion on that part. I did get the letter, which I mentioned in my, and I wrote a letter to the people, and I said, congratulations, you've, you've solved the problem. And, but it turned out to be that we were actually...
Wrong address.
Well, what happened was, I don't want to complain about the neighborhood watch, but on 4/27, they do make mistakes. They came to the property, and they gave me, sent me a citation, which I have a copy of, saying that the market was selling cigarettes. Whoops. The only problem was, on 4/27, the market had gone bankrupt and was completely closed. So there's no way on 4/27 that they could have gone to the market, but they did give me a citation.
I need to ask you to conclude your comments, sir.
Okay, and so the confusion was, I wrote a letter to the, to the people, telling them, they reckon, the committee recognized the error, and it was my fault for telling them that they had completely solved the problem. I just say in closing, they're hardworking people, I hope you give them the opportunity to stay in business and meet all the requirements you set up. Thank you.
Just a moment, sir. Any questions for the speaker? I have one.
Yes.
The condominiums that have been created over the last few years there, is that also part of your property, sir, or was it?
What is that, sir?
The condominiums that are kind of adjacent to the...
No, they were, when I had my restaurant there, I operated for over 30 years, there was nothing there. It was just vacant.
So this was never your property, it was somebody else's property, they built condos?
Yeah, they built, all the property behind the restaurant has been built in recent years.
But it was never your property?
Never my property.
All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker card I have is Homer Alba.
Thank you for having me. My name is Homer Alba, I am president of the Elton Homes Association, and I do appreciate the manager's response to what we're seeing here about people maybe losing their jobs and a business closing. I don't appreciate their attorney saying about the noise level and things like that, because I may not be a person who is qualified to speak on permits, licenses, but I'm qualified to say what keeps me up at night and what does not, okay? Besides the live music, we also have to deal with profanity after 2:00 in the morning. It doesn't keep you up from going to work in the morning, or going to school, or going to church, I don't know what does. to church, I don't know what does. I'm not here to hope that they lose their job, or they lose their business, but this is not being addressed, and they keep on doing the same thing over and over again. Thirty-five phone calls to the police department, I think is sufficient. I don't think that anybody has to be professional to say, this obviously is a nuisance. And as far as this gentleman saying that the people across the street, I think it's Anush. The wall between us, we're about 40 feet from the entrance to the restaurant, to the doorstep of Mr. Lenz's, and he's the one that has to deal with the brunt of all of this noise. We can see people coming out of the restaurant. We don't see people running across the street to take their cars away, so we have first view of what's going on there. I don't want to belabor the issue, but I think I didn't want to get into anything else except to say, the noise, it's a problem for us, okay? It's a neighborhood. And I think this is, the zoning, I think to me is very clear, the fact that they're confused about whether a permit is expired or not, or whether a corkage fee qualifies for a requirement for liquor license. I know in LA, if you allow liquor on the premises, even if you don't sell it, you need a liquor license. So I don't know what the confusion is here with them. And if they can get the story straight about what's going on in there and what's not, then I, you know what, the problem is maybe they don't understand what their business entails and what it takes to run the business. You know, it's not my problem. My problem is the noise level, that's really basically it. I hope that maybe some way they can work it out, because I don't want their business to close, and I don't want their employees to lose their jobs. It's really that simple. That's my, my whole point.
When was, when was the last time you heard noise at a very late level?
I'll let him take over that, because he's the one that bears the brunt. His store is almost directly, it's about 40 feet from the entrance, so he's going to address that.
So you don't, you never hear it?
Yes.
You do, so when was your last time?
I think like this last weekend, we still heard some music.
You heard it last weekend, what time?
I don't know, it was after 11:00.
Eleven? Not past that?
I don't, I don't remember. I, this time, you know, sometimes you don't complain anymore, because-
Right.
You know, I think the police at one time told us that they couldn't take another call, because I think after the first call from the same area, that that was, that constitutes a call.
So have you seen a progress made from, from the last year you've been there?
I don't believe he addressed that, okay? Because he has, he's the one that has to, and I think he's engaged in, I wouldn't say shouting matches with him, but he's had to yell across the wall to keep it down, or whatever, you know, that's the whole routine. So may I introduce Lance to-
Well, you don't need to introduce him, he is the next speaker card. Mr. Sales.
Actually, it's Salas, S-A-L, yes.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I get that a lot. Well, nice seeing you, good evening. I usually see you guys on TV. Just like Homer said, I live about 40 feet away from the restaurant, and last time they were making noises was last Saturday, after 11:00 PM. I think it's right after 11:30 or before 12:00 that they stopped making noises. And as far as the cars that this gentleman mentioned, because I can see new people coming in, cars parking, all the people are going towards the restaurant. You know, I don't see people going, parking their cars and then going away from the restaurant. I see them going into the restaurant. I witness DJs, they're playing loud music, because mostly on, after 10:00 PM, because sometimes they said they close at 11:00, but most of the time, the people come in around 10:00, and they don't leave until after 2:00 PM.
2:00 AM.
2:00 AM, I'm sorry. And on occasions, I can hear people singing "Happy Birthday" around 12:00 AM, you know, and then the party moves on outside, and that's where, you know, there were loud people speaking, and intoxicated individuals, and also bottles breaking. And a couple of times, I have to shout at them, because asking them nicely, they just laugh at me. You know, they said, "Oh, you don't have any problems, so you know, go ahead and call the police." So when I try to tell them I'm going to call the police, they don't do anything, you know. I understand that they're a business, but it's a mixed zone area. You know, there are people, there are students, workers, that need to go to work. Can you imagine at 11:00 PM, you're getting ready for bed, and then you hear loud music, you know, boom, boom, boom? And sometimes they do turn the music down, but what they do is they turn down just speaking or the music part, but not the bass, or the, you know, like the boom, boom sound, and that's a little bit, you know, worse than loud music, because it kind of like pierced through your body, and you couldn't really go to sleep. And I'm asking you to please consider revocating their license, because if they keep doing what they've been doing, there's no guarantee that they're going to stop doing it. You know, they violated the right of the neighbors to have a peaceful night, you know, they have to relax, you know, we have to sleep in order for us to go to work, because I go to work. I have to wake up at 5:30 and be out of the, my house around 7:00.
Sir, we appreciate your comments, we have heard you. We'll also note that you were one of the letters that we've received and noted. Were there questions for the speaker?
I have one question.
Ms. Landrigan.
Mr. Salas, if we're looking at this picture here, can we see your apartment?
Sure. You see that in the middle, the screen?
Uh-huh.
The big, the big tree?
Uh-huh.
Just right behind it.
That one?
Are you on the second floor? Are you on the second floor?
I'm on, oh, it's a tri-level townhouse. So I have a first floor as a second floor, well, the first floor is the garage, and then the second floor is the, third floor is my bedroom, facing the restaurant.
And that's Anush across the street there?
No, that's, that's, that's International Life Cuisine.
No, but across the street from there?
Yes.
Yeah. So Anush is right there.
Right there.
Yeah, okay. So you can, you can see both establishments?
I can see, yes. I can see the cars, because I just stand in front of my-
Actually, Anush is located on the corner, it's not even on the screen.
Right.
Because it has a parking lot in front of it.
Right, right in front is the, I think it's a dance studio.
Okay.
And then it's a medical facility.
Okay.
And to the, to my left-
Right, further down.
Further down.
Okay, thank you.
Right, because, I mean, there's no use for people to park all the way to International Life Cuisine, and then go all the way down to Anush.
Okay, thank you for pointing yourself.
And I don't see if Anush has gotten any complaints about their restaurant, but that's probably a different matter, but I don't hear any complaints from them.
Any other questions for the speaker?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, sir. All right, the appellant has rebuttal time, up to 15 minutes.
I only have about one minute, maybe two minutes. In terms of whether or not service of alcohol includes charging a corkage or giving glasses, the answer is no. I own a restaurant, or at least owned one, I own one again next month. And it's in Los Angeles, you know, you don't, you don't require a conditional use permit to allow people to bring in alcohol, and you can charge them $5 or $10 or $30 if they set glasses in front of them, want to wash the glasses. That's not service of alcohol, that's service of glasses. But just like putting an empty plate in front of somebody isn't the same thing as serving food. If you have to have a permit, you have to have a health code, health department permit to serve food. You don't need one to put a plate in front of somebody. Plate isn't anything. So it's the alcohol that requires the permit, not the glass. In terms of whether or not the use is grandfathered in, according to Mr., in all cases, Mr. Garcia's word, all you have to do is have one private party using more than one-third of the facility once every two years, to be a continuous use. And you have a 19, in 2003, you have a representation from the owner saying, "We are doing private parties. That's what we do. We do breakfast, lunch, dinner, and private parties, one every two years." Well, 2003 is within two years of the 2002 code change, that's enough. My clients are doing them now, and there's no reason to suspect it's been any different all the way through, all you need. And this is why the city designed their own code. The city could have written it a different way, but if we're going to write it to be that one event every two years is sufficient, and one event every two years is sufficient to grandfather the UN as well. Now, so my client's saying, I'm not, they're not a banquet hall, they're a restaurant, but every restaurant I know, every restaurant I know, will occasionally take a private party. They're stupid not to. That's all they've done, that's all they've done in the past. They've taken, they take a handful a year. They take, they take a couple a month, it's a lot. How many, how many private events do you do a year? Or say a month?
Months? Twenty people, fifteen?
Yeah, or more.
Fifteen people you consider as-
Anything 15 people to 45?
Months, maybe? Four?
Here's an idea, they're open, they're open 30 days a month, and they do four events over 30 days. That's not a large percentage, and any restaurant would be happy to get that business event. That would be what you'd expect to have gone on continuously. And I think they have an absolute right to do it, because the restaurant has been there in its present format since 1997, and there's been a restaurant on-site since 1940. By the way, if you tear down a building and put a new restaurant back on it, you don't lose your right to be a restaurant. You can remodel the restaurant, and the city issued a permit to remodel or tear down the building and to put a new building with a new restaurant on there. If you had a right to be a restaurant in 1940, tearing down the building and putting up a new one in 97 with permits gives you the right to continue the restaurant operation. So it is a continuous operation from 1940 to this present time, which is 70 years. And I'll leave it with that, unless you have any questions.
Questions? Other than the fact that you're saying it's been in continuous operation, it was clear in the findings that, that the zoning people, that plans put together, that there was no proof. So you've had several months to be able to gather up receipts or some sort of proof that you've had this grandfathering. All you've done is say it. Where's the proof?
I've done more than that.
Where's the proof?
That's it.
Do you have anything in writing, any sort of documentation, other than you saying it?
No. Actually, that's not true. I have a 2003 application permit indicating they're doing private parties in 2003. Those are representations that you expect to be truthful and you rely upon when you issue a permit.
That's not, it's not made under oath, is it?
And it's an application.
This statement isn't made under oath, none of the testimony here is made under oath, sir.
But again, again, there's no, okay, you know, you're saying that, in your opinion it's proof, in my opinion, it may not be. So you have nothing other than that application and what you're telling us verbally?
No, I also have a restaurant owner who says he's owned restaurants for 40 years, saying that any restaurant that would turn down an occasional birthday party, or wedding, or whatever, is stupid. You look for that business, you love to have that kind of business. I've got a current owner who's saying that he's running the same business, the same name that's been there before, and he's doing four a month. No, I've got some evidence. What it is, I don't have the person who's here-
You have testimony, sir, you don't have evidence.
Mike, would you tell Mr. Kane that testimony is-
You know, you know, you're talking to us, he's, you're not talking to him. Either, do you have anything else to add to my question?
Testimony is evidence. And that's, you know, not everything is in documents, some of what you get verbally. When you weigh evidence, sir, you do it on preponderance. What is more likely, what is more probable than not? Is it more probable than not that there was, there were private events there before 2001 and continued to 2008, or is it less probable? There's been no evidence that there's been no private events there for the last 40 years, and there's been some evidence that during periods of time, there have been events continuing up to the present time. I submit to you, that is evidence, and it is more persuasive than the other side, which is there have been no private events.
Mr. Lee, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. You know, this restaurant has been cited with, or the calls been made 21 times out of 35 times for noise, you know, level. And you heard the residents living next to the restaurant complaining about the noise problems, that, you know, he cannot go to sleep. You know, with this amount of calls that's coming in, and with the alcohol consumption, with the rowdy customers, what is a restaurant owners or managers, what do you, what do you do? You know, don't you normally, when you receive calls like that, if you're a really caring operator of a business, that you do something about it? I think you had a meeting also with the neighborhood services, I think you guys sat down, what the problem was. And then I hear testimony from the neighbor, last weekend, there was a shouting match, there was a noise problems. So what is it that you guys are doing right now, trying to remedy the problem?
If you, what my client indicated was that there's no more live music. He's toned down the recorded music, he's putting heavier doors in the place to keep more of the sound inside. You know, what I keep looking at is, there hasn't been a single citation. If the noise is that bad, why haven't the police cited it once? The city has other remedies, so do the neighbors have remedies. But one of the things that you can't do is you can't revoke a non-discretionary permit, the permit that only says whether or not you comply with the zoning code for something which is not a zoning code issue. Noise is not a zoning code issue. The city wants to shut the business down for noise, for nuisance, it has a way to do that, but that's not a zoning code issue, and the only issue for a zoning use certificate is whether or not they're compliant with Title 30. Now, my client has pledged to you that no more live music, and they're trying to tone it down, they're trying to keep the noise quieter. As the, as the one person said, there was noise last weekend up to 11:00 or 11:30, and then it stopped. And he didn't even tell you whether it was music or voices. Maybe it was just voices, maybe it was just people talking, maybe he's overly sensitive to loud conversation, I don't know what kind of noise there was. What I know was, the police weren't even called, and there haven't been any citations.
I just have one, one clarification. You made reference to the, I don't remember the timing, on the permit issued well back that said they had submitted an application for the loud parties.
Eight of 2003.
Okay. The application, as it was completed and turned in, stated parties, did the certificate that was received state that they were allowed to have private party?
It would not have.
Okay, I just, I didn't know, I mean, I didn't see what you had, I was just wondering.
No, the permit says, it should be in your, I don't know if it's in your packet, I can give you a copy if you like, I suppose which one it was. No, the way, as a practical matter, the way it works, you go in and you get a full-service restaurant permit, okay? I don't think there's been more than four or five banquet hall permits ever issued by the city. I know, because I'm going through their process right now, it seems to be relatively new to the city, even though they've had this on the books since 2002. In fact, I'm not aware of a single person that's come in that was a banquet hall prior to 2002 and asked for a grandfathered CUP. I'm not aware of a single one. Maybe there are some, but I did some research and I can't find one. Now, what happens is you go in and you ask for a full-service restaurant, and most, most owners say, "That's what we are, but we'll shut down for a birthday party." Not realizing under the current code, that requires a conditional use permit. So they go insane, exactly what they're doing. We have breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and occasional private parties. And they get a full-service restaurant permit, which, by the way, before 2002, if you were a banquet hall, and you went in and says, "We're a banquet hall, give us a permit," what you got was a full-service restaurant permit. That's the only permit that could be issued. There were no banquet hall permits prior to 2002.
Thank you.
Anything else? See none, thank you. Closing remarks from staff?
I had a question for the, that one, the neighbor. Can we bring him up again?
Well, let's do closing remarks from staff. Now, you know what, you're right, let's bring up the neighbor, sorry.
I just want to clarify-
Hold on, no, you're only going to be taking questions, whatever he asks you, okay?
My question is from-
Forgive me, the name for the record, just to make sure.
Please, repeat your name.
Lance Salas.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks. How, you know, we have a lot of calls that were made, and have you made most of them? Or I just wanted to get an idea of how many you've made, and when was the last time you made a call?
Sure. I moved to my present residence for about two, last, for the last two years, I've been there for the last two years, and I probably called, say, there five or six times.
And then, so you just stopped calling since the, when was the last time you called?
The last time I called was, I can't remember, but I think it's probably six months ago.
So you saw it?
Six months or-
It was not making a difference, so you stopped calling? Is that why?[1785.86] Is that why?
Well, see, what happens is, I call, or my neighbor call, calls the police, and then the next day, they do it again.
Yeah.
You know, they play loud music, they just, you know, speak loudly or have arguments. So my neighbors and I, we just given up, you know, because we, you know, we just, it's like, what, my neighbor told me, it's like, just, you know, have faith in the city. You know, they're going to do the right thing. You know, just keep calling the police so you have documentation. But, you know, the police come, and sometimes, most of the time, I forgot to mention, is the police come early at night, and then the music after an hour, an hour or two, will continue playing loudly, you know. And of course, we can't call the police again because we already called the police.
Thank you. I got-- But you can. But I, I want to tag on that question. So you're talking about at least one other neighbor?
Right.
Do they make calls?
My Sandra? Yes, Sandra.
Yeah. So they make, some of these calls are Sandra's?
There were, I know Sandra, and probably Mr. Griffin.
Okay.
But he moved out.
That's fine. He finally gave up.
And I just want to correct one thing. I didn't shout last weekend, it was other occasions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask Steve Davis, Lieutenant?
Lieutenant Davy?
Davy, to answer one question.
Hello, Lieutenant Steve Davy again.
Hi. Sorry to mess your name up.
No problem.
Were there any citations ever issued?
No, there were not. It's generally not. It's not a routine practice. We very rarely issue citations on these types of calls for service.
So you're just peacekeepers, hopefully?
Peacekeepers, yeah. You, you really want to gain the compliance, particularly if it's a restaurant. You want to gain the compliance of the owner of the restaurant and say, hey, would you, you know, chill it out, quiet down? Neighbors are complaining. And they, I've rolled on plenty of these calls myself, and they generally comply. They turn the music down and, and you leave and everything's fine. But I wouldn't, I would please, I would please encourage anybody listening to this, if we didn't fix the problem the first time, please call us back. It's not like you only get one call to the police department and that's it. You know, the, the phone line is continually open and, and we've changed a lot of our method of policing to this area command and ownership of areas. So I would imagine in the future, we'll probably see more citations or more affirmative action on the part of the department for issues like this.
I know. I look at activities sixty-three through sixty-seven, which is a period of eight days, nine days, something like that.
Right.
And there's, you know, five calls in the space of eight or nine days. And I'm like, what kind of tolerance does the police department have for this? That they wouldn't issue a citation after that many events? I mean, holy cow. I mean, I, I get stopped once, I get a speeding ticket. That doesn't, you know, talk about tolerance.
You know, as the--
That's anecdotal, by the way.
Right. As, you know, the lawyers in the room can tell you, it's, it's proof, it's collection of evidence. And for disturbance calls, you know, we really need to show who it is that's causing the disturbance. So is it fifty people that we're going to issue a citation to? Is it the business owner? Is it the person in control of the volume knob at the stereo? So that, that does cause us some issues, you know, who do we cite? So oftentimes, it's easier, like in this last report I referenced, it's easier to take a report if the officer would have done a little more follow-up at the scene, walk it over to the DA's office and request charges be filed. That's a little easier.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I guess Lieutenant just mentioned that, you know, of all the noise calls here, you, one officer selected to write the report. And, you know, that's short of a citation, but what prompted him to write the report? To, you know, to leave the record?
I would imagine, well, in talking to Officer Tucker, he, he knew of the redundant problem of noise at that location. So rather than the officers normally just advising the person leaving, not doing anything, just allowing the call to be captured, he opted to actually go the extra step and write a report and document it.
Did the restaurant owner have, did they get a copy of this police report?
No, we don't release those.
Wouldn't it be, you know, for them to actually, I guess, improve or, you know, to correct the problem, wouldn't, it wouldn't be nice for them to know that there's a police report that's been written against, you know, their operation, their noise problems, so that, you know, that serves as more like, not a citation, but, you know, warning that the report has been filed?
That's correct. That's, that's something of a function of the community policing unit, or the area commanders and, or even neighborhood services in dealing and mitigating these problems. The, truly, the core mission of the police department is to take criminal offenders before the court. That's our mandate in the penal code. It's not to, you know, try to resolve disputes between business owners and citizens, although that is a concern and a need that we see and address. So that is a component within the community policing element of the department. And I might, I might, Officer Tucker, to answer your, again, to continue answering one of the questions that you had had, why did he take the police report? He told me that he would routinely hear the music on the calls for service that he went there, about a half a block away. He could hear the bass inside of his police car. So his knowledge of the prior calls for service and that personal knowledge prompted him to take the report.
Just had one, one other thought. I guess I'm asking for your perception, but it would seem to me that the purpose of the officers going out on these type of calls and not, maybe not issuing a citation, would be that there'd be some expectation that, once the violation or the problem was identified and discussed, that the, the group or the business in violation would do something about it. It's not good to see how many times we've gone out there and not issued citations, but I guess, for point of clarification for me, my assumption would be that, that they would take action. And I think that was discussed in some of the testimony tonight, that they would follow up, they would ask for clarification, they would try to make changes. And it doesn't look like that's what's happened here, so.
I, I think most do. You know, most restaurants do. We, we have had troubles with some of them, you know, and the, and the clientele. And I know some of the business models that they would have, where everybody would come at the same time, their alcohol levels would rise at the same time, everyone would leave at the same time. You know, those, those create troubles for the neighbors, and many of the businesses have had, you know, they've mitigated those things. So, that's true.
Thank you.
Ms. Landerga?
Lieutenant Davy, she said that most restaurants, when given a visit, we'll call it that, since it's not a citation, will remedy a situation. Is it common to have seven calls? Seven days of calls and people not responding even after having a friendly visit from our Glendale's finest?
I, I wouldn't say it is common. Some of those calls were on the same day as well. I think in 2010, you'll see, I believe in '09 as well, you see a couple of calls that occurred on the same day. And that's, I would say that's unusual. In, in the old days, we had plenty of those businesses in town, some of the bars. As of late, very rarely do we have redundant calls at the same place for the same problem.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, Mr. Lee.
Before staff does their closing remarks--
Yes.
Can we get that, I guess, clarification from Mr. Garcia on the alcohol consumption on the premises?
Certainly. Mr. Garcia, it would be nice for you to weigh in, please.
Just for the purposes of our code, our code requires a CUP for the sale of alcohol. So consumption is not, does not require CUP. It's the sale part that requires a CUP. So you'd have to determine for that part of it, whether there was a sale of alcohol going on on the premises versus just consumption.
Was a sale, or sale and service?
Our code just says sale. Sale and service may be regulated by the ABC. I'm not a hundred percent sure about that. In case they'd be violation of state law, they were required to have some sort of ABC license or, but I can't, can't speak to that a hundred percent. But our code talks about the sale of alcoholic beverages.
That includes corkage fees?
I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Particularly, the sale of alcohol refers to the sale of, what's called sale of title in the alcoholic beverage from one person to another. So I don't, I don't, I don't think a corkage fee qualifies under, under state law. I, there's one other, two other points I wanted to address as well, I guess, before, at some point, either after staff has spoken or--
Why don't you just continue, Mr. Garcia?
One, there's, one issue was, this is just for clarification, that comment made that this, there continuously been a full-service restaurant. I'm actually just looking at the ZUC file, and this should probably be made part of the record, and Mr. Toboni can look at it, too. There, actually, in ninety, in ninety, at some point before 2000, I think, the space was actually broken up into two spaces. And in ninety-five, Space B was actually a, a party supply store. And Space A in ninety-seven was used for a fast food restaurant. And then even before that, I think it was used as a tile store. I think Timon Titus can speak to the fact that actually the building was built in ninety-one, not ninety-nine. And then, respect to the issue of evidence, it's, it's true, testimony is technically evidence. However, it's, it's the commission's role to weigh that evidence in, can give more or less weight to the fact that there's testimony that something may have been used for a banquet prior to, without accompanying documentation or any additional support. So it's really, you're allowed to take into account the testimony that this was used as a banquet hall. You know, and it wouldn't be a misform of court, because it's like, I think it's double hearsay, but for our purposes, you're, you're entitled to rely on it. But you're also allowed to not give it much credence if that's your choice, given the fact that there's not documentation to support it.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. And then, one other thing, I think, I think just from a issue of the non-conforming use and the comment made that you can, if you're, if you're allowed, if you have one banquet every two years, that, that would be enough to allow a non-conforming use to continue. The law strongly disfavors, discourages expansion or continuous of non-conforming uses. And so in order to continue one, you have to show that there's been a continuous, that type of activity. So it would, it would be our view that once every two years would not be enough to continue. And again, I, you're, you are permitted to weigh evidence as far as whether or not there's sufficient evidence that they were operating banquet hall before 2002 when the code changed. I'd just point out that the, again, as I think Mr. Kane was alluding to, that there, there was testimony that may have been, but there doesn't seem to be a lot of support in the record for that proposition. So, again, that's, I think those are the points I wanted to raise. Again, your deliberations.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Ms. Landerga?
Mr. Garcia, I'd like to ask for some clarification. Mr. Tobone or Toboni?
Toboni.
Toboni, I want to be correct. Indicated or has stated that a ZUC only applies and, and taking away the ZUC would be any violation of the municipal code. In essence, noise citations or alcohol consumption have nothing to do with the ZUC, and so therefore the planning director's denial or revocation does not have basis. Can you please weigh in on that?
Let me address the, the technical legal argument. The ZUC is issued when a business is in compliance with Title Thirty of our code, the zoning chapter. And, and it's revoked by the director when, when he finds that there's not evidence that the project, or that the property is, is in, is not, is no longer in compliance. So I think to extent, yeah, to extent there's general public nuisance conditions that are not specifically a violation of, of the zoning code, that would not be a proper basis to support a revocation. However, if there are, the issues of operating banquet use, and I think outdoor grilling, there are, there are, there's evidence of that, and it's up to the commission to decide whether that evidence is strong enough to support the revocation.
Thank you.
And live music as well?
Live music is a violation of Chapter Four, Five. So I'm not sure that we, that's, that was put in there, but I'm not sure that that's the strongest basis to support a revocation.
Any other questions before we ask first concluding remarks from staff? Seeing none, we'll ask Mrs. Ematitis to, any concluding remarks? Nothing to add?
Nothing to add.
All right. Well, absent questions to the contrary, I'm sorry, Mr. Foy.
Okay, just one note on the zoning use certificates and the comments that are put on them. To explain our practices, a zoning use certificate does not impose special conditions. These notations that we have at the bottom are repetitions of things which are already established law. And obviously, we don't repeat the entire zoning code here. When someone issuing a ZUC bothers to note something, they think it's pertinent to that issue. And so I would just call your attention to the fact that at least some of these ZUCs say no banquet hall operations, which was something that someone looked into and decided was not happening at that time. And a decision on a zoning use certificate is appealable to the planning commission, which was never done here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Foy. Absent further questions, we'll always reopen the hearing, but I'll close the public hearing and enter deliberations. Does anyone want to lead off?
I'll go.
Mr. Lee?
I know there's a, there's been a lot of issues that's been discussed regarding noise issues and, and public nuisances and so on, but I, I guess that's not part of the, the revocation hearing here. What we have here before us is the, the violation of the, the restaurant usage, which does not allow banquet use and outdoor barbecuing, and which they've been written up and which the director of planning made his decision based on the misuse of the, of the business. I think it would have been, I guess, better for everybody if the operator of this business would have been a little bit more considerate towards his neighborhoods, neighborhood, and with all these complaints that went in. But as far as the, the findings of the, that use, the premise usage, in ninety-five, it says that the Space B was a party supply store and Space A was a fast food, which tells me that the continuation of any non-conforming use that might be proven there prior to the ninety-five, I think, has been forfeited. And, you know, the one, the new building is built there, and the ZUC goes with the other owners and the use of the, of the business, it's pretty clear to me that the, the banquet hall usage cannot be grandfathered here. So based on these findings, I'd like to sustain the findings or decision of the director of planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Who'd like to follow?
I'd be happy to.
All right. Ms. Landerga?
I, I concur with Mr. Lee. The concern that I have is that it doesn't say you get three tries. It says that if you violated, that you violated the ZUC. And the fact that it was violated more than once also leads me to believe that there's a pattern here that's troublesome. So I think that the planning director's revocation is based in sound reasoning, and I don't see any information that was presented to me that leads me to believe that it should be not sustained. So I would concur that I think it was made on a, a good basis and it is a sustainable action.
Thank you. Please, Mr. Usain.
Well, based on what--
Well, based on what we've read and heard over the last couple hours, it seems like there's an ongoing evidence that there's stuff happening here that's more than just serving lunch and dinner. And it's more than just having a couple of private parties several times a month. Looking at the brochure, it's hard to imagine that this place is really open to lunches. It may be open to lunch crowds, and I'm sure it is, but the tables are, you know, they seat up to 12 people each. You don't find any small tables on there. However, I'm generally sympathetic to the restaurant, the restaurant business as well. And I know there's a general plan or idea to make some changes and make this a more hospitable restaurant for lunch crowds and a faster way to pick up things, and maybe not as much private parties, because there's other ways to looking at it. I may be open to, I think I might be open to an idea of allowing them to keep this use, with maybe a condition that they actually make a change happen, and actually continue with that change of changing their restaurant for the type of lunch crowds that we would normally see a restaurant like that serve. So, I'm not sure if there would be any support for that, but I think I would be open to that idea, just to be able to not totally take away this business out there, and it would still be supporting the city and the area over there, but would somehow make sure that they do change their stuff, and they do change the way they have been doing it over the years. I know some of the neighbors at least don't want to see the business closed down completely, and I wouldn't want that to happen either. So granted, without any of those changes, I would not be okay for them to continue it the way they've been doing it. That's where I stand.
All right. I'm going to interrupt deliberations for a moment, and go to the city attorney to clarify ZUCs and potential conditions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Because this is a ZUC, and again, we're just, all the ZUC is saying it's compliant with code, you can't issue any conditions beyond, and occasionally on the ZUC will state what the code requires, but that's it. You can't impose any additional conditions, which are usually geared, we would usually issue in the CUP context of trying to protect public health, safety, and welfare.
So they would have to reissue a permit and come before us again for that?
Ask for CUP.
Or ask for CP if they wanted.
It would be a brand-new application for that.
Well, yeah, we'll have to, I'm a little hesitant to answer what happens after the revocation, because frankly, we haven't really discussed it, but...
Right, but there, after it's been revoked, they can...
They could apply for a new ZUC, yes.
They can receive one you want.
Yes.
And a ZUC that we grant doesn't allow for a banquet hall per se. That's an argument being placed or observed on the part of the appellant. We're just, again, restaurant, with the traditional 30% floor space use for banquet use and so on.
Correct.
So it's not like we're saying, we do agree that you have a grandfathered banquet hall use, we're not really weighing in on that.
Correct.
Right?
I mean, to state your opinion, but legally, the legal effect is, we're just saying you're a restaurant.
Right.
And it's not a determination on the banquet hall.
This would be taking away their restaurant status.
Correct.
Right, and then they would just have to apply for a new restaurant status.
We haven't talked about that, but that's a possibility, yes.
Right.
Correct.
And there would be some period of time they might have to wait to reapply?
I'm not sure, but...
Depending, well, like, CUPs, it's six months, I believe?
Yeah.
If there's, go ahead. Go ahead.
From my understanding and conversation with Howard Maylis, that they would be able to go ahead and reapply for restaurant use, and that would specifically call out that, you know, banquet halls are not permitted, and again, banquet halls are not permitted in the SFMU zone, but that they would be allowed to operate up to 30% of their restaurant for private parties as allowed in the zoning code. So they would be reapplying for a new zoning use certificate, in hopes that they would be complying with all...
Right, they would go through the normal.
Correct. Now, if they wanted to go ahead and actually sell alcohol, they would then need to apply for a conditional use permit, which would grant the hearing officer the authority to include conditions of approval, whether it's for hours of operation, or security, or noise, or anything of the like. But that would be part of a discretionary approval process for discretionary CUP.
Unless there's something else, we'll go back to deliberations, reclosing public hearing, continuing with deliberations. I believe you've completed your remarks?
Yes.
At least your initial remarks. Mr. Sheets?
Okay. I tend to want to follow the same thinking as Commissioner Usain, as far as having a business that's trying to exist in these tough times. And I know it's not, it's not easy. But the thinking that I have now, I look at the testimony we have here in the documentation, and we're starting on the April 2nd, 2008, ZUC. And if I read the testimony right, a month later, we have a police report talking about items that are illegal. Based on what we heard from the police lieutenant, that officer issued a report because he knew for a fact that there were other violations or problems that were similar. And then from June, numerous times in June, four times in June, twice in July, twice in August, there were complaints of the same issues, time after time after time. Loud noise, there was alcohol consumption that was identified, and in fact, the one comment was made that the grill was taken out, but it was only taken out after it was identified as a violation four more times, or three more times, total of four times. So, based on the fact that we're dealing with a ZUC, I have to admit that without the testimony tonight, I had a whole different view of this process. But what I'm seeing now is a banquet hall activity is not allowed, and just from these violations, my perception is that they were banquet hall-type activities, whether it's 10 seats or 500 seats. It's a full-service restaurant, and it seems to me that full banquet hall-type activities were occurring on numerous occasions. When problems were identified, they didn't continue, and no questions were asked as far as clarification about what am I doing wrong? How can I correct this? They continued, it's a negative history, it got progressively worse. A permit was expired, they're working on a permit for the music, that expired, I know that's not relevant to the banquet hall activity. If this, if it happened once, if it happened twice, I can understand, but it seems to be a pattern here, a negative pattern, of a choice to not comply, to not follow the rules, to not try to get direction to correct the problem. And it just, I just feel that ignorance of the rules is just not, is not going to work here. So, if you can't tell, my thought is to sustain the revocation.
All right, thank you. Well, the hearings are always fascinating. We'll read the information at home, we'll go past the restaurants, as I imagine we all did today. And, you know, I always enter these, and I kind of have an opinion, you know, a feeling of how, you know, what I think about things, but then we have the hearing. And I have to say, before the hearing started, I'm like, man, this is a poster child here. This, you know, this is just a really, you know, bad situation. And, but I have to say that the testimony has softened my opinion of it quite a bit. Part of it, and we see this kind of on a habitual basis, is, oh, you need to excuse us because the bad guys were six months ago, and they're gone now, and I believe the new manager, I'm willing to accept him at his word in terms of what they're trying to do. That's great. I wish that this was more of a conditional use permit, where we actually could impose conditions, but we're in a far more difficult situation here. It's basically a death sentence type of decision. It's yea or nay. And because of it, it makes it really tough. I look at noise complaints, a lot of noise complaints, and, you know, that's peripheral to just somebody that's not being a good neighbor, that's not keeping an eye on their business. I also think of the other side of it is, you know, is it truly that place? Is it overly sensitive neighbors? There's two sides to every story. But I'm content, in my mind, to think that, yeah, the restaurants make a lot of noise. You know, if by testimony the police can hear, you know, the bass of amplified music a block away through their police, you know, in their police cruiser, that's a problem. So, you know, operationally, there's been a lot of things going on with that. The, but the troubling part of that is no citations. You know, a lot of complaints, no citations. Okay? Neighborhood Services comes, and man, they were all over them in June and July, and then after that, the paperwork presented to us, pretty weak. You know, if they were so bad in June, July, where is the continued effort? You know, I'm convinced that this has really been a poorly-run restaurant. I have trouble giving it the death sentence. I mean, if this was a CUP, I'd say, you know, because we bend over backwards, we really do, we get a neighborhood, a lot of neighborhood associations, I think, from our general process may be a little upset with us because we do give businesses frequently the benefit of the doubt, but we give them like, a year, you know? We're going to give you one more year to shape up. We don't have that option here. You know, the argument of restaurant versus banquet hall, you know, the testimony, the lack of proof, you know, it's a difficult situation. I think they've abated the grilling situation. I'm troubled that it took repeated visits for people to get their act together. I can't go, just because of the serious nature of it, I just can't tip the scales of balance to the revocation. You know, they can't, you know, the argument of the banquet hall, and the service, and the complaints, and the citations, you know, if they're a bad business, and I have mixed feelings on it, if it's a bad business, you can always say, well, just keep complaining, the police will start writing citations, and things will prove. But that's kind of backwards. But by the same token, I really have difficulty going to the point of the revocation. So I lean, and it's really leaning, it's not strongly, you know, it's not a strong feeling, I lean toward overruling the Director of Planning, but again, it's not strong. Further comments, Ms. Landrigan?
Well, I'd like to add to some of your thought here, because when I read this, I see that after July 21st, when a formal request was submitted by Neighborhood Services to revoke their ZUC, all of a sudden, it got the attention of the restaurant, not enough that we didn't have other noise calls. So, I don't, I don't think anything but revocation is going to change the pattern here, and I would like to think differently, but I see that even when they received a notice that this was going to be revoked, they continued. And to me, that's either not very smart or not very concerned. And either one of those are problematic to me, because it could have been that one assumed it just wasn't going to happen, you're going to pay for a fancy lawyer, Mr. T. Boney here, who's a nice talker and good researcher, and then we just let it go, or you just look at the facts here, and you can say, yes, I think that all of these pieces of information kind of lead me to believe that it's going to take actually revoking it to stop it. And if I were in the neighborhood and having to live through it for this long, I'd be very disappointed in the planning commission if we decided to just let them go. There's nothing else we can do outside of revoke it, to bring about the kind of behavior.
Well, you're speaking directly to my concerns. I admit that. I'm going to go with Mr. Sheets first, I think, Mr. Lee, you after. You had something, I think. Mr. Sheets?
I just, part of it is just reiterating what Commissioner Landrigan says. I see no good faith. I see continuous negative activity on a large scale. Testimony from residents, and the testimony from the police department, and the testimony from Neighborhood Services show continued, flagrant, negative activity. At which time, nothing was done about. Those same activities occurred on a large scale, on a large scale. They were very intense. And I guess I would sum it up, what comes to my mind, after going through this testimony and hearing what the limitations are between getting a PUC and a ZUC, we can't have conditions. So I think inherent in this process is the fact that if they're violated, you have to take it away, because I have no other choices. But we didn't do that. We allowed this process to go on for day after day, week after week, sometimes continuous, one day after the next day after the next day, and nothing was done about it. So, for me, since I can't do anything else with a ZUC, the way I look at it, I issue the ZUC, I tell you that you're allowed to do it, when you do what you're not allowed to do, I take the ZUC away. So, and I could maybe lean a little bit, like you are, if it wasn't so flagrant. What I see here is total disrespect for trying to run a good business, trying to be responsible with the neighbors, trying to follow the rules, that the police department and the Neighborhood Services are telling you, you're doing something wrong. At least ask what, and then maybe think about what can we do. So, just want to throw in my two cents, that I think because of the type of permit it is, I think we're limited and caused to go one way or the other based on the evidence that's been provided. And that's all. Thank you.
Was there something you wanted to add, Mr. Lee?
Well, it's actually, you know, same line of thoughts that I could be sympathetic, but I think there is a really disrespect here for the code here, and continuance of the activities. So I'm ready to either introduce the motion, or second the motion, if someone wants to do it.
Unless there's other comments, I would suggest that a motion is in order.
Forgive me for interjecting, Chairman...
We're reopening the public hearing.
Well, I'm not sure if it says reopening the public hearing. The planning commission had two motions before them. One would be to sustain the community planning director's decision to revoke the zoning use certificate, but that was based on the grounds that were listed in the original revocation letter. Based on tonight's comments and testimony, I think that might have to be amended, because no longer does the grilling apply, and in light of the discussion that the zoning use certificate should only be revoked based on actual zoning code violations, such as whatever the planning commission would like to add at this point, because, you know, again, we've heard that noise, you can add essentially any comments you have, whether it alludes to the fact that in terms of affecting the quality of life and the flagrant continued disrespect, the wording that some of the commissioners use, you can... of the commissioners use, you can include that in your motion. But as for the actual grounds of revocation, the Planning Commission might want to revise the motion that was attached in the staff report.
I think we can do that.
It just says approves the revocation. It doesn't say the revocation letter.
Well, in accord with the reasons set forth in the decision letter.
Right.
So we need to clarify that.
Okay.
So you want to? I, well, we have two ways of doing it. We can try to wordsmith it, or we can continue the matter for the purposes of the planning staff tweaking their rationale from before. I'd be happy to try to do it. I'm sorry?
Mr. Garcia would?
As Mr. Chairman mentioned, Mr. Chair members of the Commission, the, the motion references the Director's approval letter. The Director's approval letter has, or revocation letter, excuse me, has five phases, which the fifth one actually looks like a restatement of the first four. And included within those are unpermitted operation of banquet hall and unpermitted outdoor grilling. I'm not sure if those are the two that you were in agreement with or just the unpermitted operation of the banquet hall. It could be sustained on either ground or both.
Mm-hmm.
So, so I want to just incorporate the Director's letter, but just remove the, the reference to the CUP for alcohol and the live entertainment, and that would be sufficient as well.
Very good. Thank you for that insight. So on that basis, would someone like to make a motion, please?
Yeah, I'd be glad to.
Mr. Lee, you offered to make a motion. Would you like to continue through with that offer?
I think he volunteered.
I think I lost my glasses.
Oh.
So is there a motion by?
I, I will do that. I move that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of the current record relative to zoning use certificate, PZUC dash 20080251, located at 420 West Colorado Street, and after having conducted an appeal hearing on said matter, that the Planning Commission hereby sustains the Director of Community Planning's decision and approves the revocation of said zoning use certificate, PZUC 20080251, in accordance with the reasons set forth on the decision letter of August 10th, 10th, 2010, relative to banquet hall use activities as a banquet hall. I need help here.
And I think barbecue was the other, outdoor barbecue.
And the grilling, and the outdoor grilling. I don't have the letter in front of me, so I can't. I thought I had it.
The decision letter?
So let me do this again. In accord with the reasons set forth in a decision letter of August 10th, 2010, relative to unpermitted operation of a banquet hall, private parties in excess of 30% of serving dining areas in full-service restaurant in the SFMU zone where banquet halls are not permitted, GMC 30 dot 14 dot 020 dot A, and live, unpermitted cooking, grilling, as stated in GMC dot 30 dot 14 dot 040 dot A dot 1. And is the live entertainment, that does not apply? So as amended for those two items as opposed to additional items that were stated in the letter originally.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion by Chairman Sheets. Do I have a second by Chairman?
You do. Call roll, please.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. No.
Aye. On a vote of four to one, the Planning Commission has sustained the revocation of zoning use certificate, PZUC 2008 dash, sorry, PZUC dash 20080251. Under the provisions of Chapter 2.88 of the Glendale Municipal Code, a person affected by the decision of the Commission has the right to appeal said determination to the City Council if it's believed that the decision's in error or that procedural errors have occurred.
This is under that section, correct? Mr. Garcia?
All right. Or if there's substantial new evidence which could not have been reasonably presented at the hearing, an appeal must be filed within 15 days following the actual date of susection. Information regarding appeals and appeal forms will be provided upon request and must be filed in Building and Safety Division, 633 East Broadway, Room 101. Together with the required filing fee for such an appeal, the telephone number for the Building and Safety Division is 818-548-3200. And with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 7B, Parking Presentation Concerning Mobility Study.
Where's Lieutenant Davy?
Yeah.
Would you go maintain, please?
Maintain the crowd.
Please, peace.
He's, he's off duty.
No, I'm still on. That's why we really don't want victims or witnesses named.
Yeah. Soon they'll be all over those guys.
Yeah.
See, they didn't even wait till they leave to start.
Jesus.
We are live still, Chris, folks. Would you like to begin your presentation?
Sure. My name is Mike Nelson. I'm the mobility planner for the city of Glendale, and tonight I'd like to go over some policy concepts on the Glendale Downtown Mobility Study. First off, I'd want to go over the purpose of tonight's presentation, really just giving you the big picture of what the mobility study is all about. First, I'm going to give you a background on how the vision for downtown came about, then go over the main policy concepts of the downtown mobility study, and then I'll go over some of the items that we're going to be submitting to you guys in the next few months for you to review and look at code changes and the implementation components, specifically that have come out of mobility study policies. First off, to discuss the vision for downtown, as we were developing the downtown specific plan back in 2005, we came about that we wanted downtown Glendale to be a vibrant, mixed-use, walkable urban downtown. So to realize that vision, we developed a downtown specific plan, and it was adopted by City Council in 2006. It sets a blueprint for future growth in the city of Glendale, channeling that growth into downtown where it could be managed by a multimodal transportation resource, holding off the development pressure in our single-family neighborhoods. From there, after we adopted the downtown specific plan, shortly thereafter, we adopted the downtown mobility study. Council adopted that in 2007. In many ways, it enables Glendale to articulate the vision set by the downtown specific plan, and it includes a set of best practices in transportation policy. And in many ways, it enhances that vision by allowing for efficient, pleasant, multimodal downtown transportation systems. It supports economic vitality. It minimizes potential traffic congestion, and it creates the vibrant pedestrian-friendly environment that was desired in downtown. To talk about the mobility study in terms of the specific framework of how the policy document is organized by, there are six specific principles, each of which has a chapter in the mobility study. Street types, street capacity enhancements, parking management, transit service, funding and financing, and also transportation demand management. To first go over, street types and street capacity enhancements, respectively, Chapter Two and Three of the mobility study, the real emphasis on those chapters is to focus on moving people instead of moving cars. Designating specific street types for selecting primary mode purpose, whether that is, whether it's moving pedestrians as a priority, autos or transit, and with, again, the emphasis on moving people. So one of the implements, things that have been implemented thus far is improvements to Colorado Street, and that was one of three streets that were auto priority. The other were Glendale Avenue and Central Avenue. And even with that road capacity improvement, there was also extra space for street trees, upgraded lighting, and additional bus, bus stops.
Would you like us to interrupt as you go, or would you prefer to go through the?
I would like to go through, and then you could feel free to ask me questions.
Thank you.
After. Okay. The next, the next chapter was about transit service, and that was to really focus on creating infrastructure supporting transit, maximizing ridership downtown, and courting the local service with the regional transit service for efficient connections. From there, we looked on to parking management and really focusing on efficiently using the parking resources that we have currently versus building additional parking, and looking at ways to improve wayfinding and signage to direct people to available parking resources, and also looking at adopting parking standards that are tailored to mixed-use environments. Right now, our existing parking code is very single-use oriented. From there, we also looked at transportation demand management. That is looking at incentivizing alternative transportation methods. That can be involving bicycling, walking, van pools, car pools, and really looking at strengthening our existing ordinance. Another chapter in the mobility study is funding and financing. There was an emphasis on creating locally generated financing mechanisms to pay for mobility improvements downtown, and then once we get those established, looking at state and federal funding for large-scale, large-scale capital projects. From there, last but not least, Chapter Eight is the implementation plan in the mobility study. It sets a prioritized work plan to implement the recommendations throughout the body of the document. There is a timeline created that was developed to implement items in the near term, medium term, and the long term. So with that, some of our next steps that we are excited to come to you with is a variety of code changes and policy changes that are directed for us to you, that we hope to come to you in, within the next few months. The first of those are adjusting downtown parking standards. And we're looking to give, give you those recommendations really for an introductory discussion on November 17th. We're not looking for you guys to take action, we're just looking for a discussion on what you guys think. We've essentially been working with our consultant, we've met with various downtown stakeholders, and from there, we've developed a specific set that we would really like you guys to discuss on November 17th. From there, it effectively implements the parking management chapter and transportation demand, management chapter in the mobility study. I know that the mobility study is quite a large document. I would focus on those two pieces of that. Also, I did provide you with a binder that goes over the specific memo on downtown parking recommendations that Nelson Nygaard has put together. In addition to that, we've been working over the last year and a half on a lot of specific aspects that are a supplementary piece that is beyond that divider and the binder that I gave out to you. And I also want to let you know that in addition to providing you with this information, all this information will be posted online within the next day or two. Another piece that we're hoping to come with you guys in the next few months is a review of the draft Safe and Healthy Streets Plan. This is really implementing multimodal solutions that are supported in the mobility study, specifically in the street typology chapter and transportation demand management. The little background on this, the place grant was awarded to the city of Glendale in 2008, and one of the goals of the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan is to really make Glendale more bikeable and walkable, and providing a policy document that specifically focuses on bicycling and pedestrian. So where kind of the mobility study sort of leaves off in terms of bicycling and pedestrianism, this is essentially the next two policy chapters of that.
What is the place grant?
The place grant is Policies for Livable Active Communities, and it was a grant that was ordered to us back in 2008. It's a partnership that we have in the city with LA County Bicycle Coalition to develop policies to make Glendale a safer place to walk and bike. And the outcome of this grant is a policy document that we're currently in the process, in the public process. We've had several community outreach meetings, and the draft of the document is actually available online, and it's available to the public. We actually reconfigured the link, so it's very easy to get to the document now, and we're looking forward to hearing from your comments in sometime in early 2011. The next thing that we're looking forward to hearing comments from you guys from are the parking recommendations for the South Brand specific plan area. A comprehensive analysis has been conducted to look at potential parking management solutions for the neighborhood, looking to really look at, you know, seeing how residential areas and business areas, how we could come up with a comprehensive parking solution that addresses both issues. And we've actually prepared an existing conditions report. That is, that was presented to the Transportation Parking Commission back on, back in September, and that's available for public review on the following website. And since with that, we are in the process of coming up with a schedule and working with land use revisions in addition to looking at parking recommendations. And we hope to get back to you with those recommendations sometime in early to mid-2011. And we will conduct outreach and meet with various stakeholders prior to coming back to you with those recommendations. From there, I update the mobility study website and all the pieces of implementation frequently. That is linked to the website. Again, we are coming to you with three different items. We are going to come to you with more as we implement different components in the mobility study, but these are the three nearest-term items that we're likely to come up to in the next few months. Then again, November 17th is an introductory discussion on downtown parking standards. In early 2011, we look to come back to you with a draft of the Safe and Healthy Streets document for your review and comment. And then in mid-2011, we look to present you with revised zoning and parking recommendations for the South Brand specific plan area. And that finishes up my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are you guys in charge of putting the signs out as well? You said parking signs, waypoints? So you guys are in charge of picking out those signs and putting it there?
Right, and we, we actually had a contract award to us with Hunt Design. The City Council approved that contract for us to start working. And in terms of where we're at with that process, we have actually held back on that effort to better coordinate with the citywide marketing and branding campaign, which was also approved at the same time. So that, that is something that we're looking into.
There's, there's signs on Brand Boulevard that say parking this way or that way.
Right, right now.
Those are what I'm talking about.
Right, right now, we have a multitude of parking signs that direct you to.
Yeah.
Parking. It's not really coordinated as part of, as part of one system.
Yeah.
One of the principal components of parking management in the mobility study is to have that as all, as part of one system. Basically, what, what's been worked out, you know, for the last few decades is just to, you know, we, we basically just put up signs and instead of looking at it really cohesively, you know, we have several different types of parking signs.
Those are kind of temporary.
Right, right.
Okay, got it. This is just what I wanted to.
Okay.
No.
I know there's a lot that'll unfold over the next year, but one of the notes in the slides that struck me was limit road capacity enhancements to streets designated as auto priority. And I, it'll be very interesting to see that process as it goes to prevent, you know, gridlock. I mean, to me, how you handle the capacity of the street and what's feeding into it and, you know, just the whole process and modeling is just going to be very interesting to hear about. Other comments so far? Questions?
I guess so, just an ad. I was, had limited involvement with the bicycle process, and I went to a few meetings, but one of my concerns as we go forward with the biking aspect is, and I know there'd be a lot of comments opposite mine, but one of the issues I'm worried about is that we're trying to force something. It's all wonderful and good that we're going to try to make people use bicycles more and make it the city bicycle friendly, but the city's evolved over 100 years, and we have some things that were put in place in streets that were widened and changed in various ways for growth that aren't conducive to having bike sharing on the street. But I'm seeing some of these that I'm not so sure that we need to do that. So I guess I'm just sharing my thought about what could be a concern, and maybe something that hopefully we're not going to force fit something that can't fit.
Although the bikers are already there.
Oh, they're gonna be there, but.
Well, but what percentage of the population?
But what we do now is we, we throw all these signs up there, and we put, we put the, the, the painting on the street that says, "Do this," and you drive down the street and go, "How are you gonna do that?" I might, you know, you, then you try to correct, and now you're causing, uh, another traffic issue. So, I guess my point is, we just need to be careful about how we do this. It's the right thing, it's a good thing, but we don't wanna do something incorrect.
Well, and there's the balance of legis, trying to legislate behavior.
Exactly, that's, that's part of my point.
I mean, yes, the bicyclists are out there, they, you know, they need to be provided a safe environment, they, we need to be provided a safe environment, um, but then also, to what degree do you do it? Are you planning for something that, that by the fact that you're implementing it will increase it?
Yeah.
Or are you just hoping it'll increase it? Or are you legislating for a minority? And then, you know, what's the right amount of effort, time, and, and resources to put into it?
I've had this.
It's a neat process.
I've brought this issue up before, and, uh, I've had people come back at me in kind of a, a snappy way, saying, "The bikers are there, and they have a right," and it's fine. But if you just, what comes to my mind is, how many, how many people are we chip-shotting across the street that are crossing the street illegally? They're allowed to cross the street, but it doesn't make it right. It doesn't make it right that they get hit, so I don't, I don't want us to go there, 'cause if a bike's in the way and a car's going past, a car's bigger than a bike, and a car's always gonna win, and I don't want us to get that reputation.
Cars trump bikes.
Yep.
Uh, trucks trump cars. Tanks trump all.
There you go.
Well, we probably will figure out better once we get more.
I'm sorry, Mr. Higani?
Information.
If I may, I'd like to, I, I don't want to get into a discussion, but I think you've raised some ques, some good points, and, uh, just some, some prelude to, uh, much of what Michael Nielsen and others will be presenting to you. He emphasized twice during his presentation that the underlying concept behind the mobility study is to switch our, our focus from moving cars to moving people. And it's not just a good idea that planners kind of think up, "Oh, let's do something fun." It really is, uh, and we're not trying to, um, do social engineering, and we're not trying to force any policy on anyone. However, for the last two decades or so, the planning field and the transportation field have been talking to each other, knowing that we are at a point in our growth and our society that we can no longer afford to add capacity for the kind of, uh, urban growth that we're seeing to the roads, and, and then we can no longer focus only on moving cars. And given that we, we are limited, and the population is expanding, and gridlock is, is increasing, what are some solutions we can find in using what we have in terms of rights of way, and in terms of mobility, that we can then allow the, this continued urban growth and, uh, urban evolution, and then not keep adding asphalt? That's really the bottom line of that, and then, so the switch has been, let's switch from cars to people and see what we can come up with. And that's really the basis of a lot of the discussion you'll see in then several study sessions we'll have with you.
Good, very timely.
It's nice to actually do some planning instead of appeals and pucks.
Revocations.
Cups.
Zacks and.
Anything else? Oh, I'm sorry, anything else?
I'd look forward to that, the, I, I guess you would have numbers of how many, of whatever use we have now, right? That would be helpful, as for ongoing discussion purposes.
I'm sorry, can you?
Well, like, the number, to get a better idea of what's really a minority, or, or how many bikers there really are, or, I know there've been more counts like that, so that would be very helpful, you know, ongoing.
Trends, all that.
Yeah, the trends, um, with the ongoing discussions we'll have.
Right, and we've, uh, just to let you know, we actually just finished up with a bicycle and pedestrian count.
Okay.
Back in September, we documented.
Pretty extensive.
Yeah, twenty-four different locations, uh, throughout the city of Glendale, and we are actually in the process of preparing the report, comparing last year's statistics to this year's statistics. Granted, that's not very, that's not very much, but we're still building our baseline. However, it's, it's.
Look at that trend.
So, in terms of, you know, looking at trends, I'd, I'd take it with a grain of salt, but in terms of just, we're in the process of getting that, the account started, we're in the process of getting the data. I think really, knowing what your data is and what, you know, knowing what, um, what the variables are, knowing how many bicyclists are out on the street, you know, in, in, in any case of any of these policies that we're gonna bring to you, uh, we're gonna, you know, give you the background data and the research to back the policy recommendations up. And I think, you know, in terms of bicycling specifically, uh, we've conducted a count, and we're gonna, uh, provide a report, look at, look at trends, look at, um, national statistics, state statistics, before we bring the item to you in January.
Ms. Landerga?
Well, one of the things that I, I know that, uh, Mr. Nielsen is looking at, and I'm, uh, I looked at the draft report when I found it, thank you for making it easier to find, um, is that when you make it safer for bicyclists, you increase your bicyclists. So, uh, taking these studies and starting with a baseline and increasing it is important because if you are in it, if you're competing with car doors, and you're competing with trucks, and you're competing with, um, tanks, in some cases, I'm sure I saw one tonight, but, um, if you're a bicyclist, of course, if you feel more secure bicycling, you're apt to bicycle, whereas if you are not, you tend to take your car. And we're really looking at, I think it's a really good study, I think they have a lot of good precedents, and I think it'll make a, um, pretty good impression on us.
Absent further comment, can we hear, uh, Planning Department updates?
Uh, I would, uh, remind you that the zoning code advisory group is continuing. Um, we had attendance by a couple of commissioners at our first meeting. We've, uh, sorely missed your wisdom in the last few, but there'll be one more meeting.
Life interferes.
It does.
Just a expression of our.
And, you know, the refresh.
Heartbreaking here. Uh, your next, you had the last meeting off, which is good because you're gonna have a really full agenda for the next several meetings.
He laughs.
I would remind you, our next meeting on November seventeenth is a special meeting starting at four, uh, where we will be, uh, looking at the urban art ordinance, as well as having a presentation on, uh, planned changes for Arts and Entertainment District, Center on Maryland Avenue, and at six PM, there will be another special meeting, joined with the Transportation and Planning Commission, uh, about what Mike was just speaking. And, uh.
In terms of the joint meeting, are we gonna be here, the joint meeting, are we gonna modify that and go next door, or?
I think we're planning on having it here.
Okay.
If we can fit more chairs.
Are you gonna get skinny or?
We're gonna get ten people.
No, front and back.
Do you get to pick who?
And they're like a podium.
Here we go tandem parking again.
That's right. Back to the tandem parking, yes.
All right, and, tentatively, the December first agenda has, uh, two use variances, uh, a wireless facility, as well as a track map, and the December fifteenth, uh, agenda tentatively has a use variance, um, appeal of a, of a revocation of a conditional use permit, and, um, another track map.
All right. Uh, Mr. Higani?
One more thing, if I may, uh, you may have noticed that last week, the city council adopted a motion directing the city manager to start, uh, the process for a merge, uh, between the Community Planning Department and the Community Development and Housing Department, and, and creating a new department called the Community Development Department. Uh, the process, the, the, the wheels are in motion, and, uh, it should not reflect a lot of change on the Planning Commission's work program, uh, but you might see a little bit more, um, qualitative change in some of the materials that we bring to you. Uh, for example, what, uh, Michael Nielsen is going to start bringing to you, and the relationship between redevelopment housing and planning will be a lot more, uh, underlined in this new process, and we hope to bring more comprehensive, uh, looks and approaches to our planning process in this.
Good, look forward to it.
Uh, comments from commissioners? Ms. Landerga?
Well, I'd like to say that, um, the hearing today and the decision that we made on, um, the, uh, restaurant was quite painful for me, and especially in this, um, economic environment. And the definition of banquet hall that we have in the code and, and full restaurant seemed to be really almost draconianly restrictive. It would, and I know that this is like putting a loaded gun to my head and saying, "Fire," but, uh, it would be very, I think, helpful for us to look at a way to, to allow, um, restaurants to have more than one, and more than one-third on occasion.
What?
And I don't know if that's something we should talk about or bring up to council or something, but, you know, we have a lot of these here, and I think that, um, to me, it just, it just seems that it might be time for us to look at it and address it in a realistic manner that is kind of current with today's practices.
I agree. It doesn't get any clearer, so maybe some discussion.
Be careful on what we discuss now.
Some clarification, yeah, that's why I say.
So far, we're fine.
Some clarification would be helpful.
Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, make comment, uh, on the, I guess, revelation or new findings of the, uh, the alcohol, uh, consumption, that, um, CUP only covers alcohol sales, but then, uh, I see a big loophole or a possibility of, uh, restaurants, you know, uh, you know, I mean, it seems like there is no regulation on.
Yeah, the enforcement aspect seems.
People consuming alcohol, peon, and there's, there's no, no control.
It's not on our agenda, so.
I just, I, I wanna caution the commission not to, uh, have a discussion about it, there's some things that we can ask staff to look at.
But it would be nice for these things to be.
We weren't talking about the specific either, we were talking about the general. Um, the only, the only thing I'd comment, uh, in terms of banquet halls is, you know, part of the challenge is the use pattern of a banquet hall versus a restaurant, and that would be the challenge of continued conversations. Anything else anyone'd like to say? Mr. Sheets?
I had a question. Um, the scene is, I'm driving up Colorado, I come to Central, you can't, you can't miss the Americana, and what I also couldn't miss was the huge, almost block-long sign that was advertising the Cirque du Soleil at the MGM Grand in Las Vegas.
They're selling the tickets at the concierge.
But.
Oh, there's a big tie in there.
Is that the link? I mean, I thought, I thought our discussion about the signs was that they, they had a limitation in size.
I saw that too, and I thought about that, and then there's this big sentence in the bottom too, they're like.
Didn't it have?
Bottom lines, they're freaking ignoring us.
Didn't it have an Americana context to it? It had to advertise what was in there?
That's what I thought.
Exactly.
People, we got abused on it, bottom line.
Is there something that?
Always do.
I'm missing on it, that, that's okay?
Getting into.
Move to adjourn.
Yep.
Without getting into too much.
Move to adjourn.
It's half kidding.
I'll, I'll take, I'll take your response, Mr. Garcia.
The, the way I think that that ordinance was written is, any, any product or service, not just the tenants, but any product or good or service.
Yep.
Sold at either Americana or Galleria could be advertised.
Okay. That's what it was, all right.
Well.
Move, adjourn?
Don't move.
Thank you.